Council called the meeting order for the record. It is November ninth, two thousand and twenty one at four thirty five P M. We will begin this afternoon's council work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton. Councilwoman Perron. Councilwoman Strater. Councilman Hoagland. Councilman Byrne. Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda. Councilman Burt.
Move that we adopt the agenda is published.
Second the motion.
I have a motion of second to adopt the agenda is published. Is there in discussion? If not, all favor is signify by saying aye. Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next item up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
A move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Second the motion.
I have a motion of second to prove the consent agenda is in discussion. If not, all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is adopted. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will move on to department commission reports. First item up is item twenty four, Meridian Police Department report and Idaho Humane Society presentation on fiscal year two thousand and twenty two animal control services and animal shelter agreement. And turn this over, Mr. Coliani, or would you like to say your first introduce yourself with your new title officially?
Helicopter Con.
This on?
Yes.
Okay. Scott Coliani with the Meridian Police Department. Thanks for having me tonight.
Is that Captain with the Meridian Police Department? Okay.
We'll say that. I'm just Scott. We have a report tonight from the Idaho Humane Society and before I bring them up, I want to kind of tease some information up and just give you a quick overview of how we got here. And talk a little bit about some history before I bring them up. For those of you who haven't been here for a long time, not all of you, but some of you. In two thousand and thirteen, we operated our animal control shelter and animal control in this city. Over time, it evolved up to a couple of people and we had a truck and we impounded animals only, our dogs only, and our impound was out at the wastewater treatment center. In two thousand and fourteen, the city negotiated a contract with the Idaho Humane Society to take over animal control operations for the city to include shelter services. And we were no longer in the animal control business. We worked with the Humane Society in concert with Boise, Cuna, Eagle, and Ada County. And contracts with all those agencies that the Idaho Humane Society had. And it was kind of one unified agreement that they developed for all the cities and provided services to all those cities. Same agreement went on for years. In this particular year, they reached out to us kind of late in the game after the budgetary process has been fully vetted with a contract where there was a cost increase. And so, once we had that information, myself and Captain Burl Stokes and Emily Kane from the attorney's office. Went out to Idaho Humane Society and paid a visit to look at their operations, understand more what they did and why costs were increasing. And talk about communication, talk about expectations, moving forward when it came to budgetary things. And, you know, I think it's safe to say, you know, we own this a little bit on our side. They own a little bit of it. They admit to that. We have to do better. One of the things we've done is working with Karen Woodell in finance to make sure we put a tickler out there. So, moving forward in the future, there will be a placeholder where we can reach out and have those communications with I H S to understand where the contract's at as we plan for the budget over at the police department. But there, as you'll hear from the presentation, there's a lot of information we gathered about their labor costs, vet services, overhead, how they operate. How they triage their calls that come in from citizens, service expectations, all these things we had some pretty high level conversations about. And I walked away, to be honest with you, fairly impressed with all the changes that they've made over the years with their service delivery and the things they're trying to do to reduce. Their overhead to try and reduce their response times and do things more efficiently, more effectively. And I'll, I'll let them discuss that with you. They have looked at the contract and as I'll let them discuss, as they have reduced the cost. And so, tonight I have Dr. Jeff Rosenthal, the chief executive officer, Leanne Gilbert. She's the chief financial officer. And Tiffany Shields, she's the director of animal control services. And we also have Andrea here, who is our resident animal control officer who lives in the city. So she's here as well. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to them and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us.
I am Jeff Rosenthal. I'm the CEO of the Idaho Humane Society and live in Boise, Idaho. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and thank you for the staff that came out and met with us. That was a very helpful meeting as well. In starting off, I just want to tell you the status of our current contracts as of last week. We have agreement with all of our municipal partners, I guess, with the exclusion of Meridian. That's why we're here tonight. And the status of that is that we recognize this timing issue. And we do take lion's share of, of, of those mistakes. As was pointed out, there were a number of factors leading to the delay this year, including in some of our municipal partners, not necessarily Meridian, but in particular Boise, a lot of turnover. Everything from people being out from COVID to et cetera. Anyway. We got the message. This can't happen again. We'll be back at the table very early next year and working with all of the communities. You know, we did a lot of work a couple of years ago when we transitioned into a two facility model, meeting with all of the municipal partners, pretty much monthly for about a year and a half. And that's kind of where the, the current contract was modified. And we need to get back to that table. I think the last couple of years, things have fallen off for various reasons. In point of fact, the Idaho Humane Society, because we are going to keep with the current contract until the end of the first quarter. So into the beginning of next year, we'll be feeling quite a bit of pain from that delay and that mistake. We'll be taking on an additional fifty thousand dollars in cost on our behalf, on our half. I wanted to spend a minute just with a broad overview of how the contracts work, because I recognize it's been a few years and we have quite a few new faces around the council. And I know that the typical perception might be that, that the communities are paying the Idaho Humane Society to provide a service. I think from my perspective, it really is more of a cost sharing agreement. Let me pull up that document. The Idaho Humane Society, as I mentioned, now runs two facilities. Our overall budget for F Y twenty two. So we're in operation in fiscal year two thousand and twenty two of eight point nine million dollars. We have a Bird Street facility. It's a facility we completed two years ago. And no part of that facility is paid for by city contracts. That's the Idaho Humane Society's main facility. It has a five point three million dollar budget. It comprises a facility, staff and vehicles. Again, that's all paid for by the Idaho Humane Society. Then we have our Dorman Street facility. That's our admission facility. That's where we run animal control out of. That's where all the strays come to. That's where we have a limited medical clinic that provides care for strays and animals that are brought in and redeemed by the public. And that consists of facility, staff and vehicles. And the overall budget for that building and, and staff is three point six million dollars roughly. I H S pays for about twenty five percent of that operation. We're kicking in nine hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred dollars in F Y twenty two. Leaving the contracting parties, Cuna, Meridian, Boise, unincorporated county, et cetera, paying three point seven million dollars. So it's about a seventy five, twenty five percent split. The animal control specific payroll, these are folks that, that just do animal control services, just municipal services. Represents seven hundred and ninety six thousand dollars in F Y twenty two. That's about forty percent. And then the rest of that payroll that is part of this program at Dorman Street, that makes up about sixty percent of that payroll. And that's shared costs. So we're, we're all splitting the costs of those. The municipalities are splitting that with the Idaho Humane Society. It makes a lot of sense. So one animal caretaker in a kennel, you don't have to fully employ that. We're sharing those expenses. Kind of important to, I think, understand that, that forty percent, sixty percent. From time to time, we talk about what if, what if the cities decide to do their own field enforcement? And they could certainly do that in many communities. That's how it happens. That would alleviate about forty percent that would be made up by the communities then employing that part. But you still got that roughly sixty percent of the backend, the, the hospital, the, the facility and everything else there. So payroll as a percent of the animal control budget makes up about seventy five percent. That's the cost driver. This is a highly labor intensive operation and the main expense that we, that we incur is on payroll, operating costs about twenty five percent. How do we derive the contract? And this is done very transparently with our liaisons in, in city finance. We look at the overall expenses. We have various allocations generally based historically on how many strays we take in versus how many owner relinquished pets. Historically, the Humane Society has said, you know, when people from the public bring their pets in, we typically take care of that end of it. Strays are more government responsibility. That's one of the things. There's various assumptions and allocations. A field animal control officer, like I said, is going to be fully costed to the city contracts. And historically, that split over the past two years has had Meridian in terms of the animal control budget that's not covered by I H S at about twenty one percent. So I wonder if we could just switch over to that next one. I don't seem to be able to control it here. This next document just tracks the history of the contract. And you'll notice that those expenses and animal contract revenue from F Y sixteen, which is starting in this first column. And then heading over to about F Y nineteen are pretty comparable. They look like the typical annual increases that you see in departments. And that's what we experienced during those years. You'll also see that at the end of the day, that loss of contracts, that's that increased subsidy that at least by our allocation method. We ended up putting in over and above what I guess we thought we should have based on the math. And then this, this transition from two thousand and nineteen to twenty, that's where we moved, or nineteen to twenty. That's where we moved into this two facility model. And that required a reallocation of expenses where the municipalities and unincorporated county were going to need to fund a larger percentage of the Dorman Street facility. Because we had basically vacated with a lot of our programs that used to cover some of those costs. And that came about, like I said, through about a year and a half of negotiations. Boise City hired a facilitator to help drive the process. We had a lot of interaction and we worked out the agreement. And so that was about a thirty four percent jump in one year. After that, the following year, and this was largely due to some of the reductions in service that we had because of COVID. We actually experienced a decrease in the contract of about three percent. And I guess, one of the things that occurred with that timing issue this year was that I'm not sure we ever really got back on track after the big transition. And I think it was not as noticeable because everybody's costs went down and so no one cared, frankly, at least from my perspective. And so now this year going into F Y twenty two, we have an eight point nine percent increase. And about a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars of that is the payroll. Let me just mention a couple of things about the payroll. I don't think it's a surprise, really. I think all of you are aware of the wage inflation we've seen over the last year and how difficult it has been to keep employees. And it's especially been the case for the Idaho Humane Society. In, in August of two thousand and twenty, the average hourly wage we were paying our shelter positions, animal care attendants. These are the folks that care for the animals in the kennels and do various functions was eleven thirty five. And last year, we were able to increase that to fourteen oh six. Animal control officers in two thousand and twenty were making thirteen fifty on average. And this year, we've been able to increase that to an average of sixteen sixty three. I'll just note that nine years ago, when Meridian contracted with the Idaho Humane Society, the average pay for a Meridian animal control officer was sixteen fifty. Just for some perspective, our front desk staff was making eleven fifty eight average in two thousand and twenty. Now we've got them up to thirteen thirty four. Vet techs have gone from. was making 1158 average in 2020. Now we've got them up to 1334. Vet techs have gone from 13 to nearly $16. Veterinarians, which are a part of the shelter payroll, went from 3696 to 4644. We're in the midst of a massive veterinary shortage. Succinctly, in 2020, we had about 23% of our employees making $10 or less. So those wages had to increase and they increased rather quickly. In an ordinary year, I would have been very proud of what we were able to accomplish for our employees. But frankly, in an environment where folks drive by fast food restaurants that are paying more, it's hard to feel that good about it. But that is the reason for this jump. It is almost it is in the most, for the most part, the necessity to get payroll up to a living wage. And I'm afraid for some of the employees just as close to a living wage as we can at the moment. Looking at the operational costs, I think we've actually done a really good job containing expense. Overall increase of about 6.8%, which is about $43,000 overall. And if you look down there at repair and replacement, you see that $81,000 budget number that's being ascribed to the contracts. And that number, we're going to see that increase here over the years because we now have a building that is aging and it's primarily serving a municipal purpose. It's going to have to be maintained in large part by the 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 communities. So that results in that overall animal control budget of $2,697,401 for FY22. If we look at this next sheet drilling down specifically to what you're interested in is what's going on with the city of Meridian. So in FY21 here on the on the right hand, we had the contract in FY21 of 511,903. And the number we're asking for for FY22 is 576,827. That has been reduced 21,641 from the original request. We will be funding that for this quarter, which of course we're already in. So that number represents 22% of the overall contract, what's being split among all the communities. And that is to serve 26% of our total population that we serve for this community that makes up about 22% of field calls annually based on last year and initially the average for the past three years. That's how that was derived. By the way, when we talk about payroll, we have held our FTEs at exactly the same as the previous year. We're not adding any additional employees on to the work, to the workforce. This is all wage increases. As was mentioned, I have Leanne Gilbert here, the CFO. So she is here to answer any detailed financial questions you might have that I might not be able to answer. But I also have Officer Shields here. And Tiffany Shields took over our animal control operation. How long has it been? She has made some significant improvements in processes and efficiencies. She runs animal control day to day and runs the admissions facility. So she's here to provide you some information about performance measures, about some of the questions you have about response times, and really anything else. But I will stand for any questions that you have at the moment.
Thank you. Counsel, just so one quick thing, just to to bring everyone up to speed, the also the facility that you're using in Boise is a Boise City facility that you aren't a lease on anymore for the
Nope.
That's no longer.
Yeah, and kind of a trigger for me. No.
So we understand.
You know, it's often perceived, Mr. Mayor and Council, that this is a Boise City facility. We have a 40-year lease on the property that we built the facility on. We built the facility with almost all Idaho Humane Society funds. Because I I kept hearing this from folks who I just were maybe a little misinformed. I reread the lease recently, just to firm in my mind, there's nothing in that lease that requires us to do anything for the municipalities. It really is our facility. We often refer to it as the community's facility, the municipal facility. But in point of fact, we own and operate that facility and we still have another 16 years to do that. And there's nothing in that lease, I think, that suggests.
The lease is for the property only, but you.
Yes, property belongs to the airport. And to tell you the truth, that is why we, when we did the capital campaign, because we didn't have support from municipalities at that time, we did choose to buy a separate piece of property that is our own. And that's where we invested $16 million, basically, in a new facility. So I think moving forward, because we really are viewing this as kind of a joint powers operation, a partnership. Yeah, the facility belongs to us, but I think we all need to work together and come up with the best long-term strategy to maintain, improve or transition that facility. I think we're we're open to getting around the table and looking far into the future because the building does have a finite life before these systems begin to fail. And in fact, we're investing quite a bit into the HVAC system because for a number of years, we have really been on a razor's edge in terms of things failing at the hot time of year.
Thank you. That's my hold on.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Rosenthal, just as I'm listening, I'm, you know, trying to process and get all this information coming back on council and like I said previously, it was under the old, old system. So it taking me a while to connect some of the dots, but you you'd mentioned something about 40% that if we were to do the animal control portion, I can explain that a little more. I wasn't sure what that.
Sure.
Entailed.
And that's a ballpark. But essentially, when you look at the field enforcement staff, these folks out in the field, you look at some of the front end staff that pretty much do nothing but deal with the public for animal control business, the dispatchers and the administrator. That's that proportion that if I were to extract field enforcement from my operation, that's what I would experience basically at Dorman is a reduction in payroll of about 40%. But everything else, all that care that goes into those animals that you really cannot, you can't operate field animal control without a place to go. We all understand that. The animals have to go someplace. The people have to go someplace. They have to have a place to reclaim their animals. We have to have a place for medical care. That still makes up the the larger portion of the contract. So I guess arguably, it is true, many communities work with humane societies that simply do sheltering operations and then the the animal control officers work for city and county and it's that kind of a relationship. But if you project forward, I think what I was trying to get to is sometimes I get the impression from folks in 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 government that they think they can just easily replace all this by just hiring a couple of officers and getting code enforcement to do a few extra dog calls. And and that's just not the case. You're unfortunately, you're stuck with having to have some responsibility for facility and animal care along with picking animals up, writing tickets and et cetera. And in terms of the cost sharing agreement, I think the other perception is it really is a shared responsibility based on some allocations and assumptions, which are always going to be imperfect. We all got around the table in 2019 and agreed, well, it's it's not perfect how we're divvying this up, but it's the best we can come up with at the time. I think the other perception I'd like to get away from is there's sometimes the idea, we go out and pick up Fluffy and Sparky and Rover and Meridian, and we accumulate a lot of data. There's a lot of data that goes behind that. We know each of the animals has a digital record that includes where it came from, what happens to it, all the care, every single person who laid hands on it. It's basically all there in the record. And then what happened to the animal? Did it get euthanized? Did it go back to the owner? Did we adopt it out? All that's there. But at the end of the month, we don't generate an invoice based on what we did with Fluffy and Sparky. And neither do we, if we come out to Meridian and deal with Mrs. Jones' dog who's going after Mrs. Smith's chickens. Yes, we have a lot of data behind that. We know when the person was dispatched. We know how long it took. We know who did what and how long it took. But we're also not generating a bill for that service. It's just each of us parties around the table contributing what we think is a fair share for keeping the thing going. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Pro.
Thank you. I just was running some percentages here on Meridian specific costs. It looks like our portion, our dollar amount of our portion from 18 to 22, which is really about four years, has gone up about 34%. But our population increase has only gone up 33% and our calls have gone down 18%. So I'm trying to understand a 30%, 33% increase to our contract in four years when our yes, we've had a population increase, but the actual calls being responded to are less. But the percentage of the contract is staying the same. So can you help me understand that? It seems like that's a really significant, almost $200,000 jump in four years to the city when the number of calls have decreased by almost 20%.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, my name is Leanne Gilbert and I am the Chief Financial Officer. As I was sitting here listening, one of the things that I realized that somebody might pick up on is that FY18 and 19 numbers actually look really low. And the reason for that is that when we took over the animal control contracts, we basically purchased the vans that Meridian had for animal control services. And so you guys got a credit to the tune of like 60 or $80,000 per year for those first couple of years towards your bills. So that 380 and that 390 is not reflective of the total cost of the service. It's actually more like, you know, for let's say 460, for 440 to 460. I don't remember the exact number. So the increase isn't quite as bad as what you're seeing and thinking it is. It's because those animals, those vans were in there. And then to your question, your point about fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20, there was a significant jump about 60,000, I believe it was from 19 to 20. And again, that goes back to what Dr. Rosenthal was saying about, we went to a two facility model. And when we were in one facility, we had our adoption center, our public veterinary center and our animal control services running out of that one facility. So animal control was picking up approximately one third of the cost of the facility. So the utilities, the lease and that kind of stuff. Well, when we went to a two facility model, animal control is really the primary function out of that building. And so that's where the cost allocation went up. And that's when we did this series of meetings in order to walk through that and explain that it was becoming a municipal facility, a more municipal based facility. And so instead of, instead of IHS taking on approximately two thirds of the cost of that building, we're now taking on a much lower portion of it. Does that answer your question?
Counselor Pro.
Thank you. The first portion of my question, yes. I guess what I don't understand is in the presentation, you had said that the the building on Bird Street is entirely paid for by contracts. But or not paid for by contracts, excuse me. So then what, how would the two facility model be affecting the fees that are collected?
So the Dorman facility is completely, and I shouldn't say completely, as Dr. Rosenthal noted, the Dorman facility is now at 75% paid with the contracts. Bird is not covered at all under the contracts. But prior to us opening the Bird Street facility, we shared in a much larger portion of the cost of the Dorman facility because we were running adoptions out of that and our public veterinary practice. Whereas now those functions are done at Bird Street. So because we're not using the Dorman facility to the extent that we were, a much larger portion of the Dorman Street facility cost is allocated to the contracts, which is why you saw the increase from 19 to 20. I'm not doing a very good job of explaining myself.
So then was there a change in the service that was provided to us? Because location's important, but it's that's what I guess what I'm not tracking. It seems to me like if our cost is going up, it's because we have either additional demand or we have additional services being provided to us, or the facility is expenses are higher and you're just passing that on to the municipalities.
It's a kind of a combination of all. I mean, as I believe Tiffany, as Tiffany will get into, we've increased our service level.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the negotiation that occurred was essentially that the responsibility for the physical plant needed to be passed on to the municipalities. Arguably, we could relocate all of our operations, quote unquote, humane society operations to this new facility. So essentially, we just simply could not afford to subsidize the municipal operation to the extent that we had in the past. And I could not take this facility and my board would not allow me to take this facility and say, hey, we're going to continue to fund it to the extent we have using our donation dollars to fund basic government responsibilities. So that that's just the reality of how that that worked out. And I guess I would argue, based on the previous years prior to that shift, that we were over subsidizing from our donor dollars. And I realize there's a gray area in there always between what's the mission of the municipalities in providing services and caring about animals and wanting a good community? And what's the mission of the Idaho Humane Society? And in most parts, it's it's interlocked. We're all on the same page. The bottom line is that if you go to most communities that are probably peer communities to Meridian around the country, they're pretty much, if they're running their own operation, they're doing almost as much as the Humane Society is doing. In other words, you're just taking on, they just take on everything, including a lot of the things that frankly, we pay for on your behalf. That's kind of how I would say that in a rather candid manner.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Schrader.
Would it be possible for Tiffany to come up? Because I've seen her try to come up like four times and I feel like we need her voice in this discussion.
Along as that's up to the presenter on how they use their time. For the record, Councilman Cavanagh did join us at 5:03 of the call.
Yeah, Officer Shields has done a fantastic job for us, came to us from a major animal control operation in San Diego, just amazing place. And yeah, sorry, you're Californian. I grew up here, that's why. But but just before, on that annual report for Meridian, which is in your, I just want to point out that per capita number, 451. There's always questions about why are the costs going up? Why is this? It's also important to look out to your peer communities and see what does it cost to do it yourself? And I'll just leave that in your hands.
As you said, my name is Tiffany Shields and I am the Director of Animal Control Services. And I just want to say upfront, I'm so excited to be here to talk to you guys. And I appreciate your time and I hope I'm not going to take too much of it. But one of the things I wanted to direct is that what extra services are we getting? What are we getting for this money and what changes we have made for that? And one of the things that Dr. Rosenthal talked about was a mission, right? And before I came here, I read Meridian's mission that says, Meridian will deliver superior service through committed, equipped employees dedicated to the stewardship of the public's resources while being a vibrant, livable and connected community. I think that's what we want. That's what I want to provide for you guys. So I took over this in the middle of COVID. So I didn't really get the chance to come out and meet people. I don't know if you guys have seen, but we've revamped animal care and control a little bit. This is our new design that we have on our vehicles, our new designs in our lobby because the Dorman facility is animal care and control. So when you come into the Dorman facility, you're going to see this sign because we're there for the surrenders, we're there for the strays, we're there so people can redeem their animals. If you didn't know, that facility is open seven days a week, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We've been open like that through this whole thing, no matter what our staffing was or what we're doing. We've been open like that through this whole thing, no matter what our staffing was or what we're doing. Dispatch answers the phones seven days a week, eight AM to six PM. Um, we are a twenty-four hour operation. So you do have animal control officers on call from eight o'clock at night till six AM also. So those are services that the Meridian citizens get through these contracts. So, um, some of the improvements that we've made since separating the shelters. Have you guys ever been to Dorman when they were together? And maybe you came in and there was a long line for adoptions out the door. And you just want to drop off the stray that's in your car that you're hoping is not chewing up the back of your seat, right? Well, we don't have that problem anymore because we're not doing adoptions out of there. We don't have people going in there looking at the animals, walking through the cats that we need to supervise anymore. We don't have that. Um, so we're very dedicated just to intake. Okay? Um, one of the things that we've done, uh, to improve service is, um, to be more efficient. Uh, we've changed our priority levels, um, and priority calls. We have new programs for handling certain calls, like for example, a barking dog call. Those are really fun. You can ask the captains. I'm sure they've been out on a few of them. Citizens are very passionate about it. It disturbs their peace. Um, they want officers out there right then, but there's other calls. There's fluffy getting attacked by the neighbor's dog. There's, um, someone who got bit by a dog and we need to do a quarantine. So we have changed our procedures where now we have a barking dog letter that we send out initially. Because most of the time when you go out on a barking dog, no one's home. That took the time of the officer to drive all the way over there. You know, gas, the vehicles, everything. But now we got a letter that they're going to get in their mailbox. And that letter is informative to them, tells them ways to change it, that change the behavior. It tells them the codes that they're violating, um, that sort of thing, um, to try to gain compliance that way. Uh, we also have assigned areas. So the officers are assigned certain areas and they stay in those areas to help with our response times. The other thing about the dormant facility being the animal control facility, that also means that the front desk staff is answering phone calls. Um, in the past, I know that there was complaints about communication in the past that you could get voicemail when you called in. Right? Well, now I have a dispatcher answering the phone. If he's on the phone, that phone rolls over to the front desk people. They answer that phone call. They have been trained to take bite reports. They have been trained to take animal control calls. So again, the increase in their wages, they're doing additional duties. So we can be sure that everybody is getting good customer service and reaches someone. The other thing that the Humane Society has, um, invested in, uh, that we didn't have previously is all the officers have cell phones now. So citizens can reach the officers directly. No more going through dispatcher, trying to go through, see which day they're on duty. They have voicemail. You can leave a voicemail for them. They also all have email. So if you have, if you got bit by a dog and the officer wants your report, you can email it to them. And, um, you can be in communication with them on your case directly. You don't have to go through the dispatcher. Um, we invested in radios. All the officers wear radios now. So dispatch can reach an officer directly for a priority one call and get them rolling as fast as they can. Um, we also added, this was actually a request by Ada County, but we have a night drop kennel. So if Meridian PD has a stray late at night and they don't want to wait for the officer's ETA, maybe my officer lives way downtown in Boise, they can go to the shelter and place the animal in the night drop kennel. We'll give them the code. And then the officer comes directly to the shelter to bring the dog inside. So that was another time-saving thing that we did. Um, I've also been working really hard with improving our relationships with BPD, Meridian PD, Eagle, and the Ada County Sheriff. I went to briefings, uh, all Meridian PD briefings to go over with the officers, what we're doing, how our services improved, how do you reach my officer, what my expectations are for my officers to be there. Um, I did that with BPD, Ada County, all of them. So, um, we also have been sending our officers to training right beside your MPD officers and code enforcement officers. Um, so we've also invested, we now have an FTO program, uh, that has three phases, before an officer goes out into the field. Um, the other big investment, um, that I don't know if you guys know about, but prior to January twenty twenty, uh, all we had for reporting was PetPoint. So they were unable, PetPoint was unable to provide, um, the kind of stats that Boise City wanted. So we invested in Omnigo, which is a patrol, uh, software. So it records every call that we go out on. And I send monthly reports to the city clerk every month. And I'm also including the captains now that is part of our accountability. And every month you can see what our average monthly response time is to priority one calls for all jurisdictions. You can see in those reports how many calls we had for, uh, Boise City, if you want to look over on their page and see how many calls we serviced for them. And the calls are all listed by category. So you can see how many barking dog calls we did, how many aggressive dog calls we did, how many check conditions. You can see that in those reports and you know how many there are. Um, and then we have the most detailed report. There's one report that just has everything. You can see the time my officer arrived on the call, when they left the call, how much time they spent on the call. And there's a code for how they resolve the call. Um, so you can see that. And if you need me to look that up, if you're like, um, if you were, happened to look at those calls in Meridian, there was a call and it says the result was a citation on an injured animal. And you're like, why would they cite someone with an injured dog? Well, I can look up that call for you and I can let you know, oh, the officer went out there. The dog wasn't injured, but it was at large. So we issued a citation to the owner for that. Um, we've also developed, um, community policing. So we try not to resort immediately to citations. We try to educate, we try to warn. And then that makes our citations stronger in the end. If we can tell the judge, look, we've tried to work with this owner. We've told them they've got to keep their dog confined. So, um, we've also invested in a lot of equipment. Um, and if you also didn't know that citizens can file reports for animal control online twenty-four seven. And all the animals that we have impounded are on our website. So the citizens that are missing pets can go on our website, see if their dog is at our shelter with a photo posted. Um, that happens immediately as soon as they're impounded.
Councilman Schrader.
I've quite, just a general question, uh, being a newer council member. Is there an element of cost recovery? And I'm sorry, Director Shield, you may not be the right person. I don't know who the right person is to answer that, but, you know, do we have an element of cost recovery? Are we offsetting the dog and pet licenses? And that revenue to the city with the cost of this? If an owner, sometimes it's not your fault, like if a crocodile appears in your yard, right? But like if your dog is attacking another dog, you're responsible for that. Like, does that owner pay for that? To help offset the cost of service or how does that work?
So with citations, the fee goes to the court. And that's why we are like, it, it's, it is punitive. Um, we, I guess we could bring up, um, impound fees, uh, for Meridian. Your guys, the impound fee, if we pick up a dog in Meridian City, we take it all the way back to the shelter. We may house it for five days and the owner comes and gets it, it's ten dollars. The city of Boise, if your dog is unlicensed and unaltered, it's ninety dollars. So, and that's true. If I pick up that dog six times, the owner's like, no big deal. It's ten dollars. We do charge them licensing and stuff. And I do believe she would know, um, Boise does get those impound fees back. Uh, we do pay that back. Uh, I think with licensing, I think we share it fifty-fifty. Um, but yeah, I would love for you guys to look at your impound fees because sometimes when we impound a dog, we want that to, I mean, have an impact. So they want to keep their dog home. Dogs that are running on the street unaltered cause more bites. They also can breed while they're on the street, causing more unwanted puppies that could be on the street at another time. So, um, it is definitely something that I hope you guys would look into and maybe there could be cost recovery in that.
Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. That was really, um, helpful. That was eye-opening. I, I don't, I don't want to take the discussion down a different road. It wasn't meant to go, but I'm sort of looking at.
For another, for another day.
Okay, another day. We noted that. Thank you.
Council on additional questions at this time? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If you guys ever see my reports and, um, want them explained or one-on-one, please don't hesitate to reach out to me.
Um, Council, from a, from a process standpoint, uh, I just trying to, I may look to Mr. Neri, the contract is been worked on by your office. Is it, it's not been put on an agenda yet to my knowledge?
I think, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think we're waiting to seek the direction tonight.
Right.
And then see where we go from there. I think it's, I think it's been.
Yeah. So from a practical standpoint, if the contract comes forward and you all agree to it, you know, uh, I will look to our CFO and Police Department, but we could probably jail the money from personnel savings to offset the cost and not do it unless Todd tells us we need to do it a different way. Um, and come back with the budget amendment, if you approve the contract for those additional funds. So one way or the other, we either can use the money we have, it's not spent, or come back and do a budget amendment and do it either way. But that would be the next steps. So you all are aware.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Just a couple of thoughts on that. My first reaction to budget amendment, I think it's just more transparent. Better for worse to show that added expenditure, but, um, this new contract I assume would have language which gets us on the right schedule that, it's, you know, through.
That was included, yes.
September thirty, that we're going to be provided requests before an X date. So it all happens in April and May of every year as part of our budget process that we get on.
And that has been included in the contract. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Oh, Councilman Schrader.
Would the issue of the impound fees be included within that contract or is that totally a separate discussion that Meridian sets?
I, I would, I use a separate policy conversation with council.
Fair enough. Thanks.
In a lot of different ways, I guess. Captain.
Just be, before we wrap up here, I wanted to, I didn't give you an opportunity if you had any questions from the police side of the house before or after the presentation. Your point, that is a discussion we had. It's a different discussion as far as cost and impound fees and that separate thing we've already talked about. If you had any questions or anything from the police side of the house for me.
Councilman Pro.
Uh, just in general, are there any issues that you're running into that, that the Humane Society isn't able to service or help with?
No, I, you know, from, like I talked about, we, we went up there to look at their operations. Animal control, and this goes way back when I started in ninety-six and I'm not going to clear back there, but it, it can be a very contentious thing, collecting animals. I mean, I always joke that you could write someone ticket for speeding or parking or take their dog and it's on. And, uh, it's so, we're happy with the service. It's never going to be a service where you don't have complaints or there aren't things that get missed or it takes a while to get there. But I feel comfortable after touring and seeing how they're dispatching calls and they're prioritizing. There's logic there. There's a lot of logic in how they're, and how they're approaching their business for us. Um, and so we're comfortable with where we're at now, um, with animal control. Um, we've run the numbers before years ago about, you know, should we do this thing ourselves? Can we do the whole thing, build a building? You know, hire a few people and do it someplace else. And the numbers just didn't run out. It didn't work. It was, it was more for us to do it. There's a lot of pain points and a lot that goes into doing your own thing, a lot of pain points and, uh, stuff that you wouldn't even think about. And so, you know, anytime that that discussion comes up, it's just like, you know, hiring your own janitorial service rather than contracting that out, hiring prosecutors rather than contracting that out. Devils in the details. And right now, what they're doing and the services we're getting from them is working.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Council, next item on the agenda, uh, Finance Department Third Party Billing Proposal. We'll just kick this off. Uh, you have seen paperwork coming from Mr. Vaivoy. I don't know how much he wants. You want him to go over all that again or just have a conversation over what is, being considered at this point in time.
Mayor, members of council, again, appreciate you giving us the opportunity to, uh, continue our discussion and dialogue on third-party billing. To get us kind of where we are today, um, this is a follow-up to our October presentations. We've presented this topic to you twice now. Uh, we've had plenty of discussions. We've had collaboration. We've answered questions. You guys have, um, provided us um, input on where we are today. So, middle of October, we presented to you. Uh, since then, Carrie and I have reviewed both workshops, notated, I think it was about fifteen or sixteen comments and questions presented by you, the legislative branch, to us for consideration and thoughts. Uh, we have actually met with a handful of you or, uh, you council members in person to get more input, more collaboration and more dialogue on what we're presenting. And there was a comment by Jessica this, today on an email. This seems that changed a lot and the answer is yes. Um, that's what this process is for, is to discuss our proposal, get input from you guys, go back and work out a proposal that might work best for the city and the citizens. Uh, so that's where we are today. We've, uh, taken your input. We listened to your thoughts. Uh, we've engaged you and we've reviewed the questions and that's where we are today. I presented to you a one-page document that I think summarizes where the changes are. Couple of weeks ago, I put an email out that this represents, an email was a little rough. I mean, I, again, trying to put this all in words, uh, is, is a little difficult. So I tried a different approach, more of a visual approach. Hopefully this one makes more sense. Um, in general, we have four major changes as a document that I provided you today, four major changes that I'll discuss with you. Um, the original proposal is on the left, the new proposal that we've liked to, uh, present to you for consideration is on the right. Uh, the major changes, um, we used the term, let's disband all third-party billing last time. We want to kind of use that word, but not use it as drastic as it was originally. We would like to continue to offer third-party billing services to our customers in the form of only with a property management company. So that's that first, uh, line segment. So instead of just eliminating the whole proposal, we'll continue to offer third-party billing services to property management companies. Uh, with that, uh, the property management companies that have an existing third-party billing agreement, no changes to them other than one ma- one minor change, what we think is minor. When a property management company is, um, acting on behalf of a property owner and there is a tenant or tenants, multiple tenants. In past, they have asked us to conduct a final read. So if there's a tenant swap, they can kind of do a mathematical calculation on the best estimate of what monies are due to the existing or the prior tenant versus what the new tenant would be. We'd like to eliminate that process and allow the tenant to move in and out as they need and allow the property manager to determine what value of expenses to collect from the previous tenant or the future tenant. So it would eliminate that process. But the third-party billing would still be intact. Any existing third-party billings that currently exist would stay in existence, um, until, um, a property is sold or a property change in, um, a property management company. So if property owner has a renter. So if property owner has a renter for seven more years, we're still going to acknowledge the property, third-party billing as it is. We're going to let them run out until there's a transition in the property. Those are the three major changes, um, that I can talk about on those top three. The fourth one is delinquency notices. Uh, again, we worked, we, we listened to you guys and said, hey, can we get the link with the notices to our, um, physical addresses? And the answer is yes. So we'll go ahead and conduct that, uh, change because currently we do not provide that extra service. We'll go ahead and add that to the to-do list. And then the last three items are no changes, uh, from our original proposal that we started a couple of months ago to today. Um, and those were the, um, no changes to the commercial properties or those multi-unit complexes with multiple dwelling units with only one water meter type of situation. Eliminate the $20 fee. We're still promoting that elimination of that fee. And then water and, uh, utility billing would reallocate the current staffing resources that we have and allocate them to other services to be more proactive in our customer service. So again, that's the quick four-minute version of, of what changes occurred. Again, I tried to give you a visual of it. We provided an email of it a few weeks ago of these changes. And we're here to discuss this. Um, again, we're open to any ideas. That's what we're here for. And we're eager, we're happy to answer any questions, address any questions and, uh, present to you any thoughts or concerns. So again, Mayor, stand for any questions.
Um, Sarah, could you speak to the property management company element? Last time we spoke, I know there was concerns over how that would be defined, applied or otherwise.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so when I spoke with, with Carrie and Todd, I said, one of the concerns I'd have is really is no universal definition of what a property manager. And so there's always the potential that property owner is going to say, Bill Mary is my property manager for this address. I have really no way to combat that. So we, that's a, a concern. If it's not a concern, the clubs, they don't anticipate that to have a significant impact to them. That's certainly their fault. But we don't have any other way to define it. If we want to try to define it, I imagine there's probably lots of definitions out there. I don't know what they are, but there certainly isn't any state of Idaho. So right now, if a person said, I'm entitled to do this because if my tenant is really my property manager, I don't really have a way to address that. So I that's not an issue. That's certainly not, that's not legal.
Mr. Mayor, again, Bill, when we talked about this, um, we would like to try to find some definition. Would it be a, um, a registration with the state of Idaho? Simple as that. We would be able to recognize that if you, in this example, if Bill would like to make his renter a property management company, then we'll have to acknowledge it. Is it going to create an issue for us? We don't think so. Uh, but we would like to see if we can maybe utilize the state of Idaho's registration of businesses as a, maybe a leaning point. If so, then we can validate that Todd Lavoy is a registered owner of a property management company in the state of Idaho and works on behalf of Mr. Neri. Are there options? Yeah. I agree with Mr. Neri that defining it would be very difficult to do. But we don't see much of an issue with property owners asking every tenant to be their own property management company again, but we'll find out. It's all speculation. We're all trying to figure out what the right answer is.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, and just one more thing, just counsel knows where I am on this issue. So I'm not going to belabor my points, but I do think the, the issue of no fee whatsoever is an underlying concern that I, that I have because there's still a cost to whatever we do in this element. And while if council's fine with having no fee for the next year, until Todd figures out, or Mr. Lavoy figures out how many of these there are, but people are going to change property management companies. There's a cost even to those, those elements because I, you know, that is what people are going, going to do and it will have a, some impact. So waiving all fees and not having any fees for you in this is, would be an underlying thing that, at least in the this proposal, if you were to go that direction, ask you to reconsider that element. Council on Pro.
Thank you very much. I agree with that. That was, there's about three things I want to mention. Um, I agree that to keep the fee, I, I don't think that's prohibitive in any way. And I think it's very fair to request that if, uh, because there still is a cost obviously to us servicing that even on the property manager's behalf. Is it possible instead of having property manager have to prove that that's what they do or have a registration with the state, that property manager would sign some sort of agreement that they will take responsibility for, uh, communicating the bill to the, to the occupant. They're not necessarily taking responsibility for the payment of bill, obviously, but they're taking responsibility for communicating that bill to, or making sure that, that the, um, you know, something in writing from them that says, hey, this information is going to get passed on the occupant. And every one of the property managers knew, knew going forward. Obviously we can't go back and do it with the existing ones or we could, but that would be too complicated. So that was a thought. And, uh, I don't know whether it actually solves the problem or not, but it seems to me like if you have a direct responsibility taken by the property management company to communicate with the occupant, that's even cleaner than just them saying that they, that they operate as a property manager. The other thing is, um, I personally don't think it's necessary to send the delinquency notifications to the occupants that have a property manager. My concern was that there are landlords that will opt out of that, not have a property manager at all. And that those would be the individuals. They're not required to have one. They can continue to have that bill sent to themselves. Uh, but that's where I have concerns that the occupant would not know about the, the bill not getting paid, not the comp, not the occupants that actually have property managers who are overseeing it. So from a cost standpoint, a staffing standpoint, it, it doesn't seem to me like there would be that many notices we would need to send on a regular basis to, if we're basically saying, hey, you have to have a property manager to do this and it's going to take time for us to eventually get there. But when we do, then essentially those delinquency notices are going to be very nominal. Am I understanding that correctly?
Right now, the city of Meridian does not have a large delinquency issue. So agreed. So that we don't see this expanding our delinquency concerns in the future. So we agree with you there. Again, we think it should be just go and be best practice that we send delinquency notices to all physical addresses regardless of ownership or not. It's just a customer service thing we can do. So we think that's the case.
How much, um, staff time do you anticipate this changing? So right now we're at 1.25. We anticipate keeping the, that allocation to stay servicing this?
If the proposal regarding, if we went to this proposal, it's a fair question. We don't know what the answer is. Yes. We think the paperwork associated property management is going to be very nominal. Um, hence why we proposed a $0 rate. You know, Carrie can come up here and explain. I think we spend maybe 10 minutes on that process. So we can calculate a 10-minute fee for you. Again, we can do that, but we, we don't spend much time. The biggest fee was always collected for the chasing of the individual tenant and finding the property owner who might be in Florida. Trying to get them to coordinate, coordinate the proper paperwork. Whereas if I'm working with just a property management company, they're pretty quick on going here. Here, here it is. And really we're done. It's only 10 minutes of work. But, so we don't see a lot of time there. Um, 1.25 FTEs. You know, um, we will reallocate and always look at if we need the resource, we keep the resource. If we don't need the resource going forward, we present you, we don't need the resource and we eliminate a staff. Uh, we, we have no problem going all the way to that extreme, but right now we still need the 1.25 FTEs for this.
And I just wanted to reiterate the, um, question regarding property management verification. I am already in the works of creating.
Carrie, can you just get closer to the mic?
I am, uh, currently working on a one-page document for property managers to accept that role and their responsibilities. So that will be one, I can, um, add that bullet point to verify that they are sharing the information with their tenant.
And on that, again, with something we'll have to work with legal on, we just want to make sure that the property manager does not have the ability to start subletting the property. So there's a lot of concerns and once a property owner gives that right to somebody, we need to make sure that we protect our residents to some level. That's why we're leaning on this property management company because they have that restrictions or it's that rights to it. But once you give those kinds of rights to an individual like me, we want to make sure we protect the resident because we don't want me to start managing the property in what I believe is right. And we wanted to protect them as well. But we'll work with legal on all that language.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Schrader.
Just a couple of things. I think overall makes sense. Um, I like the updated proposal. I guess I just have two questions. Not sure if we're allowing existing third-party agreements to stay active and keep that going if the incentives really make sense. I would think for the ones that continue, a processing fee is appropriate. Maybe that would help incentivize them to move off of that or some sort of a timeframe. You could always come back and we could always figure it out later. If you find you have 100 that are still in that bucket of like the third, second column, number three.
I'm happy to address that. So the fee itself would only be used when you transition. So we don't, actually don't want to charge a ongoing monthly service fee. It's only when a property changes. That's the only time we would, we incur extra costs and that's the only time we would, uh, charge a fee to the property owner. So we want to stay away from a monthly fee. Once Joe Borton has a property third-party agreement with somebody and it lasts for 10 years, we actually have really limited expenses because they have a working relationship. We don't really spend any extra time. It's when the property owner needs to change his hands multiple times.
That makes sense. I guess, but just a quick follow-up question. So maybe, and maybe this is sort of getting into the verbiage of the definition of property manager. I guess maybe a question I had, um, is, is there a reason that we can't say, you know, it's prop, we're, we're making a transition as a city and it's property managers approved by the city and some level of discretion? Is there a reason legally that we can't, you know, take that approach? Sorry, Bill and I are. Is there a reason we can't say we're making a transition and the category that's allowed to do this are property managers approved by the city? They have to sign the form and, you know, submit, declare a certain number of things and we can Google them on the Secretary of State's website and make sure they're property manager.
Mr. Member, Mr. Members of the council, Councilor Schrader, there is no registration with the state. There is nothing. There's no regulation of property management by the state. So there isn't any place to register to do that. And we don't require visiting either. So there really isn't that check that we're talking about exists. So we either have to define it or, or it normally does. So if it's not clearly defined, they just look at the text and say, what's a property manager? Probably what it's worth to you. So we're not going to probably get very far unless you want to be. And we don't license, take as a license that very large general, uh, investigation that ended up in prison for fraudulently managed property out of a prison. So it is something that is out there. It doesn't have much, just was very significant. I mean, it wasn't as significant. So there really isn't that backstop. And we can tell property, we can use this for a property manager company. But I don't know legally if I can find that beyond.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Schrader.
Just to further clarify though, I guess my question is, is there a reason that can't, we can't have within the city's discretion to approve property managers who are eligible for this service? Can we put that within our discretion to approve them? In the very, very unlikely event, I, I, this seems so far removed, right? Like someone's going to have their tenant register as, like, it just seems really far removed to me.
Theory, Mr. Members of the council, that's what it is now, right? Technically, when we do these billing arrangements, the owners are saying that person will accept the bill and pay it. If they don't, I'll pay it. So they're accepting that responsibility. So they're kind of already doing that. It's, it's, we could certainly, I, I'd like to do some research first because you do have to have a governmental nexus to just create a regulatory actually have to have a reason. Problem you're going to have is again, what's the problem you try to solve? And the state doesn't choose to do it. Why do we need? That's what you're going to get pushback from. Why do I have to pay a fee or register or anything? Do something that nobody else regulates any. So we certainly could look into that if that's the direction of the council, if you want us to do that. Create a method to license or register for these type of, of activities. But I can give you an answer.
Mayor, Mayor and Councilor Schrader, I believe in my mind, that's why I was developing the, um, payment or property management acceptance is to have at least a one-page form, a document that acknowledged that they were taking on that role regardless of whether it be a customer or an individual. But it has not, I mean, I'm currently working on it to replace the renters' addendum, but I have not presented it to, to Bill to have legal review it yet. But it's a lot of the same terminology, rather than saying tenant, rather than saying as a tenant, I agree to, it's as a proper manager, I agree to with the bullet points.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Schrader.
Yeah, just some feedback. And that seems to make a lot of sense to me. And so since it's an agreement, we're voluntarily entering into, to do future agreements. You design this form, right? That seems to make sense. I don't think we need to create like an in-depth, uh, scheme to regulate property managers. Mr. Neri, I think we're good.
I, I guess I'd go back to the question though, then. If every tenant is going to be able to enter into these agreements themselves, which they will be able to, I'm sorry, they will be able to. I don't think that you're going to be able to exclude them to do it. How are we doing this? And then saying we're not going to charge people for basically doing what we're currently doing, even though we're not charging an adequate amount for what we're currently asking to be done. Yeah, that was a circle, but it, it's, it still begs the question, where are we going and what are we trying to do and/or why? Or is it better to keep doing the service and just recover our costs for it? In a full way. Uh, uh, counsel, last time we talked, you talked about doing this in a public hearing, inviting the community to, to come. Um, that was the direction. Uh, I wanted them to come back and put this in front of you. I don't know what this ordinance looks like at this point in time personally, if it's written or so these be written. But it was our intention to do outreach. So the people, once we wrote it, do the outreach and then schedule the public hearing. So that, that probably will be after the new year would be my guess, just as we're coming into where we are with what do we even have scheduled with, um, other council meetings. So we can continue down that path if that's the way you'd like to go, um, at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor.
Council on Pro.
It was my understanding and finances, welcome to correct me, that the purpose of bringing this before us was to eliminate the chasing down of, uh, really acting as a property manager in, in the sense of, of trying to collect those funds and then doing the third readings. If, if I'm understanding this updated proposal correctly, we're still essentially taking out those, those, um, activities that were causing the most heartache. Is that true or is that not the perception that that your departments are having?
That is correct.
Okay. So we're still accomplishing what it is that you essentially set out to accomplish and with the updated proposal.
And tell every person who's in the house registers as a property manager. And now we're into an agreement with them and going through these processes.
Mr. Mayor.
Right, yes.
All right. I guess to close or until they don't.
Yeah, it might not happen. It might not happen.
So to answer that question, let's schedule a public hearing. I thought that's where this was headed. I thought all of the design and purpose behind the original proposal made sense. And we're going to track it and we'll see what works and what doesn't. And now that it's, it's been modified to try and create some compromise and consensus. I'm supportive of the updated proposal as well, at least to be presented at a public hearing. We can argue this all day long. It's just, I, I, I trust your judgment from my perspective that this solves more things than it might hurt. But if there's unforeseen problems that arise, like the mayor's describing, revisit this and we'll bring it up in the summer and the fall and say, hey, we made this one change. It's not working like we intended. Let's pivot back. We'll be responsive. That all means let's move on with.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Schrader.
I, I don't, I don't think this.
That's my pro.
Um, I'd be hon, I'm honored to be called by her name. Um, I, I don't think that, that the, that the property manager taking responsibility has to be that complicated. You have the owner sign the document. You have the person taking responsibility to send the document and it says on there that they can't be the occupant. That doesn't seem to me like it has to be that complicated.
All good discussions for, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
We'll see where it goes.
I, I, I think from just from practice, we're moving forward. They'll continue to work on the ordinance. There'll be outreach to the community before a public hearing is scheduled or in time for people to get the information for the public hearing. So council's so interested in moving forward. That's where we're going. We don't need to go any further tonight. Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, sing that by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Hey.
Council, call the meeting to order. For the record, it is November 9th, 2021 at 6:04 PM. We'll begin tonight's regular city council meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simmsen.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Next item up is our community invocation, which tonight will be delivered by Benny Hanky of Valley Life Community Church. If you'd all please join us in the community invocation or take this a moment of silence and reflection.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to be with you again tonight and pray for you. Let's pray. God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the fair city. You've granted us the privilege to live in. We ask now that you would grant wisdom and discernment to those members of the council as they lead and those members of the community as they speak. God, as we approach the holiday season, we ask for a spirit and a sense of joy and gratitude would be among our citizens here. We continue to lift up those, Father, on the front lines as they serve our community in the hospitals and in the medical profession, in law enforcement and in fire protection, Father, and our teachers and community leaders. We ask that you would help us to be a city that would love our neighbors and would bring glory to your name. I ask these things through Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Bless you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as published.
Second motion.
I've been motioning a second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favor seeing that by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted as published. Next up is our public forum. Mr. Clark, we had someone sign up this evening.
Mr. Mayor, we have one gentleman signed in, James Thompson, discussing downtown parking.
I'm surprised you come forward, be recognized for three minutes.
My name is James Thompson. Um, been, grew up in Meridian, Idaho, most of my life, went to Merida High School. Went away for a little bit and I've been watching how fast we've been growing. And so my main concern that I'm looking at is I'm watching all this development in this area. And, you know, like the apartment unit, I've been just looking at it, looking at the plans. And right now you guys have one parking spot per unit. And on top of that, there's a bunch of retail units down there. And who knows what that retail facility could bring, you know, if it's Starbucks or something like that, you never know what kind of boom would that bring? My concern with all that is in talking to some of the owners that are down here, there's a big concern of the impact of the economy of our business people, um, any, anything, or even just like my wife and I, to come down and visit and be here, it's turning into a place where it's, it's not as enjoyable or pleasant because you're, you can't find a parking spot, you know, or the parking spots or, you know, they're, they're, they're full. Um, there's a lot of construction. I know that in a, in a sense, when you have construction going on, there's always discomfort in that and that's part of growth. But with growth, I'm wanting to ask you guys, what is the plan that you guys are going to have for like the apartment units that are coming in? Cause for one, cause if you look and you, you can, you can Google it and it says the average amount of vehicles per household is two. That's, that's straight from Google. And so with one, this is just the residents there, not visitors, but residents right there. There's going to be an influx theoretically of a hundred cars that are going to have nowhere to park. And so these are not just people coming from the rural areas. They're people that are planted here that are coming. And this is all, I mean, of course, this is all theory, you know? But the concern I have is like, what plans do we have to make sure that we can keep our local businesses alive? And you know what? I mean, I, I don't know how, anywhere the way to put that, but that's my main concern is what, I mean, are we going to look, are we looking at parking structures? Are we, you know, is there people we can team up with, other businesses that are willing to chip into that? Because I know that part of being a community, it's like, hey, if we can look and save money, if there's businesses that are willing to chip in to say, hey, we're willing to partner with it. I know there's a church over here. They might be willing to, to partner with a built, a, a structure. And I don't know if that's something that you guys have. I yield my time to for questions or, and you know.
These, we really don't get into a dialogue at this point in time, but I can tell, if you can give Ms., give the clerk your information, we can follow back up with you offline with our, or you can talk to Councilmember and he can fill you in on all where we're going, but to hopefully answer some of your questions, but appreciate the information and thoughts.
Okay. So there, so you're, so what you're saying is you guys don't have a plan right now?
No, what I'm saying is the public forum is for you to convey that information, but it's not a, an agenda item listed. So it's not a conversation back and forth at this time, but we can't have a, that conversation offline.
Sure. Sir.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. All right. Next item up is a proclamation and for Family Court Awareness Month. Go and go down to the podium and I'll be joined by Christie Martin and Renee Swinton McCloskey. So if you want to join me at the podium. So a, as was mentioned, this is a proclamation for Family Court Awareness Month. So I'm just going to go ahead and read my proclamation and then we will hear from Christie and Renee about the organizations. um, from Christie and Renee about the organizations and impacts on this issue. Whereas the mission that One Mom's Battle, O M B, in the Family Court Awareness Month Committee is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that provides child safety or prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children. And whereas F C A M C works to increase awareness on the importance of education and training on domestic violence, childhood trauma, and post separation abuse for all professionals working within the family court system. And whereas the judges and other family court professionals are educated by the F C A M C on the empirical data and research that is currently available, including research such as the adverse childhood experiences study, the Sanders study, and the Meyer study. And whereas the F C A M C is fueled by the desire for awareness and change in the family court system while honoring the children in the United States who have been murdered by a parent after a custody court rejected the other parent's plea for protection. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert E. Simison hereby proclaim November twenty twenty one as Family Court Awareness Month in the city of Meridian and urge our residents to learn ways to prioritize child safety and act in the best interest of children. You all can come forward.
Thank you. Um, my name is Renee McCloskey and this is Christine Martin. And we're honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of Family Court Awareness Month. Twelve years ago, my sister Tina, the founder of this movement, entered the family court system naively believing that child safety was prioritized. My sister's safety and my niece's safety was not prioritized. They were repeatedly placed in harm's way. Finally, after six years, my sister's concerns were all validated, but what she and her daughters went through to get to that point is unacceptable. We must do better. Our children are our future. Heidi de Leon, a Meridian resident, was viciously murdered in two thousand nineteen. Heidi was a member of my sister's support group. She reached out to my sister for help in December of two thousand eighteen. And less than two weeks later, she was murdered. She feared for her life daily and expressed concerns to the family court system for years. Had they listened sooner, she may be standing here with us today. We would like to dedicate this proclamation to Heidi's daughters and we thank the city of Meridian for standing with us and proclaiming November as family court. We know that domestic violence is about power and control. The desire to maintain power and control doesn't mysteriously vanish when the relationship ends. It transitions into post separation abuse and the family court system becomes the platform. The need for power and control often escalates and the desire to hurt the healthy parent and win at all costs become the driving force. The children become the pawns and the weapons. Most family court judges have no training in domestic violence or trauma. Our lives and our children's lives are literally dependent on the court becoming educated on these issues. We believe that the first step towards change is awareness. I'm grateful to Meridian and to the state of Idaho for joining the list of almost two hundred cities, counties, and states that have proclaimed November as Family Court Awareness Month. Thank you for standing with us to recognize the importance of court, a court system that prioritizes child safety. Thank you.
Thank you again for being here. Council, with that, we'll move on to our action items for this evening. First item up is a request for reconsideration of city council's decision of Well Street Assisted Living and Door Subdivision age twenty twenty one dash zero zero two four. I'll turn this over to Mr. Nary.
Thank you, Mr. Nary. As a council, you have before you request for reconsideration of the decision uh, that was made by this council a few weeks ago on the Andor Sub, the Well Street. The decision at that time was an aisle project. Uh, they have properly filed a request for reconsideration required by code uh, for them to ask. It's up to this council and basically your decision point is either approve the request for reconsideration, schedule it for a new level of hearing, deny the request for reconsideration at the end of it for city's protection at this time. And the third option is to review the findings, take amendments or changes to the findings. We've reviewed the findings. We helped draft the findings. We're comfortable that the findings meet legal requirements that are mandatory principle, but it's your decision on whether or not you want more or outcome or if you want to have it compared. As, as you know, there truly isn't a, a hearing in that sense. The applicant is here. Um, they have their counsel here, but they, uh, this is not a dialogue. This is simply a question. You want some clarity. If you're clear about something, you're up to ask that question, but other than that, it's really interesting.
Thank you, Ms. Nary. Council, questions, comments, actions? motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I was just going to say I was absent at that meeting, but I have read the minutes of the meeting and fully understand the what took place and, and the decision that was reached. And I, I certainly respect the decision of this group. Uh, whatever the direction they determined to go as, as they did at that meeting. So just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I read the, the letter submitted by Givens personally. I appreciate the feedback and context provided by Mr. Nary. I don't see any reason for me to change the recommendation of denial that I made, I think, at that meeting. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we deny the reconsideration request uh, for the Well Street Assisted Living and Draw Subdivision, item number H dash two zero two one dash zero zero two four.
You second that motion?
I have a motion, a second, uh, to deny the request for reconsideration. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, that's the court's call. They're all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Barrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. Burn. Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the request for reconsideration is the nine. With that, we'll move on to item three this evening is a public hearing proposed winter-spring twenty twenty two fee schedule of the Meridian Parks and Rec Department. I will open this public hearing with Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thanks for having me tonight. In front of you, like, uh, Mr. Mayor just said, the twenty twenty two winter-spring activity class fees. Um, listed on there, you'll see the increased percentage, uh, at the request of Council Cavanagh. Note that some of the increases, um, percentages went up based on, we went from an eighty-twenty split to a seventy-thirty split just to cover our costs when it comes to different facilities and things. On top of that, there's also a combination of, depending on the class, how many days are in the, in the session or the dates in the class, things like that. Went from there was five Tuesdays in the class compared to four, those types of things. So, um, fees are what they are there. Um, with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Thank you. Yeah. This is a public hearing. Mr. Clark, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not online. I have not checked the back of the room. I will do that.
If there's anybody that would like to provide testimony on this item, if you feel free to come forward in the audience at this time. Um, if you are on, online and you'd like to provide testimony, you can use the raise your hand feature and we can also bring you in. See no one coming forward, nobody online. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Pearl.
Um, just for clarification purposes, you make a motion to adopt the resolution? And that's the only motion that's necessary?
After we close the public hearing.
Right.
Oh. Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Any discussion? If not, I'm favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The public hearing is closed. Yes, item four on the agenda is now resolution number twenty-one, twenty-two, ninety-six.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty-one, twenty-two, ninety-six, adopting new fees of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department and authorizing Meridian Parks and Recreation Department to collect such fees and providing an effective date.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve by resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-two, ninety-six. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks, staff. Appreciate you guys putting the increase and like seeing some of those new classes. I don't know what this tree climbing thing is, but I'm interested in learning more about. Appreciate it.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Guys have it and the resolution is agreed to. Uh, next item up is a public hearing for Settler Square age twenty twenty-one dash zero zero seven two. I know the applicant has requested, uh, this to be continued. I assume you want to open it at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
That conversation. Yes, okay. Well, I'm gonna start by opening the public hearing, uh, for Settler Square age twenty-one dash zero zero seven two and uh, turn this over to Councilmember.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, since we are, since we opened the public hearing for this one issue, I'd like to, uh, recuse myself, uh, further discussion with regard to this item. Um, so, thank you for that time.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Uh, Alan?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alan Tiefenbach, associate planner, standing in for Joe this evening. Uh, this was a request to modify an existing concept plan, uh, basically at the northwest corner of Eustick and Venable. Uh, the original mo- development agreement required a hundred percent commercial and they wanted to amend this to allow a mix of multifamily and, and commercial. Uh, when the staff wrote the staff report, we were recommending denial. Uh, based on that recommendation of denial, uh, the applicant wanted to see if they could work out the issues and are requesting a continuance until November twenty-third.
Okay. All right. So, Council, you've at least heard the rationale. We do have the applicant on. Would you like to hear from the applicant as well at this time? And I'm seeing, not at this point in time. Uh, Mr. Clark, we did have some people who signed up uh, to provide testimony on this item tonight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, four people signed in to, um, wish to testify.
And so, Council, I guess that begs the question, if we want to hear from the public as well? Or if they're, depending on what day is potentially selected, if they're able to return and provide testimony at that time or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I'd prefer to, to wait on the public testimony so that the applicant can respond to any concerns the public presents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman. Yeah. Welcome. Thank you.
Um, no, I, I think if this, if there's going to be changes to this, um, I, I think, uh, as long as we can make sure they have that information in advance to review it, their testimony may change. I don't know. Um, and, and just have to see what, what their updated plan would be. So I, I think that way we can, everyone can speak to what's in front of us instead of speaking to something that will no longer be in front of us. So I, I think as long as, uh, and Alan, I think we will be good in having that out in enough time for that hearing for folks to review it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I think that is a good differentiate differentiation than just they can't be here. The project taking testimony versus the project is going to be different. Correct. We're not sure exactly what the proposal is going to be yet, which is why it might be a little premature to have too much public discussion until we know what their revised proposal is going to be.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I appreciate when our public take time out of their busy schedule to come down and testify and it's always be a little surprising when there's a continuance requested. When I look at the requested date, it's a, for many folks, a holiday week. I don't know the likelihood of the folks that are here to testify, if they're going to be able to attend on the twenty-third, wouldn't want to take away their ability to provide that feedback. And so I'd, I guess, maybe, Mr. Mayor, a straw pull of those in attendance, if the twenty-third also worked for them, or maybe you want to wait till a little bit later in December, ensuring that those that made time to be here tonight are able to attend to provide their testimony with the updated.
Okay. And, and there's also the remote option for people as well, if they can't be here in person. That's the beauty of our new system. Um, i- is the twenty-third the date that, I know we do have a busy calendar on the twenty-third already anyways. Mr. Clark, you want to weigh in on?
Um, you do have four public hearings on the twenty-third. Two of them are related to, um, urban renewal.
Councilboard.
God reaction is the first Tuesday of December would be better. I mean, we've got staff reports to get out, get to the public, let them digest it. It only helps. Who's talking about the weekend? Holiday week.
Can we find out if that works for the applicant who is in the room?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wardle's online. He should be able to speak.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, John Wardle, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're muffled, John.
Sorry about that. Sorry, bad connection tonight. Um, it appears you want, uh, you were asking for the first week in December, like December seventh, is that correct?
Correct.
That would be fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. So, so for those who signed up in the audience, December seventh. Yes, let's see if he's. Yeah. All right. Well, then with that, do I have a mo-
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Move that we continue the public hearing for Settler Square age twenty twenty-one dash zero zero seven two until December seventh.
Second, that motion.
I have a motion, a second, to continue the side until December seventh. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Or maybe just some discussion. I think I heard maybe from a couple of people in the back of the room that that date does not work and that they strongly prefer to testify. I'd hate for someone who showed up and that date doesn't work to not have that opportunity in person. I personally would like to open the public hearing and allow them to do that.
But I, what I heard was today would be great. I didn't hear that they could not be here on that day, just today would be great. But.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
The trade-off and then, and if remote testimony is great, if it's an option, but the trade-off is if we hear testimony today, it might be about a project that isn't what's actually before us. So we don't know exactly what to do with the testimony that's provided. So it's kind of cuts both ways. If, if there's an opportunity to participate on the seventh, even if it's remote, it's probably more substantively on point to what's ultimately presented uh, in light of the reason for this continuance. So that's generally why we bumped it. When the, when the need for the change is because the application is not quite cooked yet.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
I'd just like to mention that, um, anyone is welcome to send in an email to the city, a handwritten letter to the city, a voice message to the city. We do look at all of those prior to our hearings as well.
Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
There's a motion on the floor, so I don't know how that works, but I would move that we open the public hearing and take testimony from anybody that's.
We, we would have to, have to do that. And then I'm going to ask staff to present, and this is not our staff member to present. Then I'm going to have to ask the applicant to present as well. So just so we understand, we're going to not get a good project because we don't even have our staff member in the room either. So, but let's, let's go with the disposition of the motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I, I did specifically make the motion because of the fact that of, we're, we're, we're going to hear testimony on something that may not be relevant. And I, that's a waste of their time. And I know we've got options for them to provide testimony. Um, it, it doesn't, if, if there is substantial change, um, you know, there might be things related to traffic and that sort of thing that might be similar, but overall I, I just would like the comments to be specific to the project that we will be considering at that time. That's my, my only reason for doing it. It's not to exclude anybody, but it's certainly to make sure that testimony is relevant to what we are considering.
Well, we do, as, as mentioned, we have a motion, a second, we have to dispose of that. Well, we do, as, as mentioned, we have a motion, a second, we have to dispose of that either by vote or by the motion, a second maker withdrawing their motions. So, then with that, also, quick, all those in favor of continuing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Opposed name?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have it, we'll continue the public hearing and that's when we'll take public testimony on this item. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Intermountain Wood Products Expansion H twenty twenty dash zero zero four two. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alan Tiefenbach, associate planner with the City of Meridian. This is a proposal for an annexation of three acres of land with the IL zoning district. Request for a DA modification and two future land use amendments. So, the existing property, the proposal consists of six properties. So, one, two, three, four, five, six. And they are located near the East Franklin Road, South Locust Grove intersection. Two of these properties, these two here, hopefully you can see, looks like you can see my pointer. These two properties here are already in the city. These two properties here are presently in the county and zoned RUT. And then there's also these two properties here, and I'm gonna talk about that a little more. These properties are only being proposed for a future land use map amendment. They're really not part of this development proposal, but again, I'll talk about why they're being included. So, to the north of the property, these, these two here, if you can see my pointer, these are the ones that are being proposed for annexation. To the north of that is zoned RUT, it's existing rural residential. To the east over here is R fifteen and CN. To the south, which is down here, is zone CC. It's recently was approved for a childcare facility, the Learning Tree. And then to the west over there here, this is all an existing office park. So, the, the two lots that are being proposed for annexation, these two, or sorry, the two lots that were, that are presently in the city, they contain an existing business and these were annexed in nineteen ninety-six and platted as what was known as the Meadamott subdivision number two. There was a conditional use that was approved for this. It was for a wholesale, wholesale building materials building and that was approved in two thousand and one. And the CCC was approved in two thousand and three. The two parcels proposed to be annexed and zoned to IL, that's what you see here. These properties are being proposed in order to do an expansion of the existing business. And again, these are presently in the county and they're not platted. The two additional lots down here propose for a future land use amendment. And again, I'll, I'll go into more detail about that. These, three eighty-five and three eighty-one South Locust Grove, these were annexed in nineteen ninety-nine. And CCCs were issued for that existing daycare in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and seventeen. Once again, although these lots are being included as part of the comprehensive plan, land use and map amendment, they're not part of this development and I'll go through in specificity. And trying to get this thing to move for me here. Why is this not working? Okay, there we go. Okay. So, again, here's a summary of requests. The first is to annex two properties into the city with the IL zoning to construct a fifty-nine thousand square foot and some change square foot warehouse. So, these are the existing buildings that are here. These are the two properties that are being proposed for annexation. This would be the warehouse that they want to build. The other proposal is for a development agreement modification. And the reason why is they want to remove a requirement for a permanent twenty-foot wide landscape planting strip. This long blue sliver here, this is what is shown on the plat right now. The existing Meadamott Development Subdivision, the Development Agreement requires that there be a permanent planting strip in there. And again, I'll go into more detail about that. And the third request is for a future land use map amendments. So, the first amendment is to change the designation of the properties to be annexed, which would be these two here, from mixed-use community to industrial, to allow the zoning for, for the warehouse. This is what is existing now. Here is what is being proposed tonight. The second map amendment involves these two properties down here. And again, this is where that existing learning tree facility is. These, these properties are being designated, are also designated for mixed-use community to commercial. And the reason why these, that we're changing the land use map amendment here is when we talked to the applicant about this, we didn't think that it was a good idea to have these two little enclave pieces zoned mixed-use community. It made more, it was a cleaner thing to do to result, to redesignate these to be commercial, to fit with the rest of the commercial to the south and to the west. So, it's, it's merely just a cleanup. So, you don't have two little floater pieces here that are, that are designated for mixed-use community. So, that's the only reason that they're included into this tonight. Okay, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about this proposal now. So, again, the area is presently designated for mixed-use community under the future land use map. To the east of the subject property across South Locust Grove is single-family attached. That's what you see over here. There's also a religious institution, which you can see here. There are commercial and office uses to the south, down here. And directly adjacent to the west, all of this is a twenty-seven acre industrial park, including the, the buildings that are part of the existing business. Adjacent to the north here are two existing single-family residences. And north of those is a two and a half acre property zoned R four with a development agreement that allows ninety-five multifamily units. Also, this now is a large ACHD detention pond. When this was approved for the ninety-five units, it was all one big piece. Since then, it's been subdivided off, so it's probably not gonna fit ninety-five units. Kind of a side note there. Given the existing development in the vicinity, the size of the remaining undeveloped properties and that the UDC requires site circulation to occur from a local street, staff does not believe that the subject properties have the accessibility and are viable for the integrated walkable synergistic development that's anticipated by the plan for mixed-use community. Staff does believe a plan amendment is appropriate to allow a change to industrial designation for the subjects' properties and a commercial, commercial designation for the properties to the south. So, again, that would be these properties down here. However, staff does have, does have reservations about how it would interact with the existing properties to the north and, and in the future, what kind of issues, if any, it would cause for the rest of the properties to the north being recommend, still being designated for mixed-use community. Okay, for the DA modification, the existing businesses when the, within the Meadamott Development Agreement. So, this here is the existing business in this building here, and this is all a industrial subdivision called Meadamott Development Agreement. And that DA requires a permanent twenty-foot wide landscape planting strip along the east boundary. That is this long sliver that you see here. This, until recently, all of this was owned by the Property Owners Association. This was required because all of this, at the time that that subdivision was done, all of this was residential. There was really probably no intentions of anything other than residential at that time. So, this landscape strip was required to buffer the industrial from the residential uses. This proposal would create a new development agreement for the subject properties and would remove the requirement for this buffer in this little area directly adjacent to the subject properties. The, again, like I said, this buffer was in a common lot and it was owned by the Stonebridge Owners Associations. In February of two thousand and twenty-one, the portions of the common lot between the existing business and the parcels to be annexed. So, again, if you can see my little red pointer, basically in this area here, this was deeded to the applicant. Unfortunately, it was done improperly. They, they didn't go through a subdivision in order to do that, so it's not a proper subdivision. The applicant is gonna be required to be able, to have to do a short plat in order to merge those in. And, and the reason why is because it was actually subdividing this parcel. This was one large piece. When they merged this in, they're actually cutting that piece of property in half. And in order to cut it in half like that, you're actually doing a subdivision, so it's required to do a short plat. In addition to that, when staff went out on a site visit, all of the trees that were initially planted here had been cut down. They were laying in the front of the property. Staff requested that they, and staff noted to the applicant that those trees were part of the DA requirement. You can't cut down the trees. Staff requested that the applicant account for all those trees that had been removed. And the applicant responded that eleven trees have been removed in this area, ranging in diameter from eleven and a half inches to twenty inches to a total of a hundred and sixty-nine inches. So, one of our conditions of approval is that that number of caliber inches be provided in addition to what the regular landscaping requirements are. You follow me so far with all this? I know it's complicated. Okay, I'm seeing heads nodding good. Okay, site plan. In the staff report, the original one that you had, staff noted that although we supported the use in the future land use map amendments, that there were issues to be worked out with the concept plan and elevations. And the reason why is with the original version of the concept plan, there was, we, we had issues with access. In particular, this is one of the things we'll ask for you to discuss tonight, is primary access coming off of Locust Grove. Excuse me, this was the original one. Primary access coming off of Locust Grove. There also, at the time, was not access provided to the north and to the south. And our regulations say that if you are on an arterial street, that if you have the ability to provide access to adjoining properties, you're supposed to do that. The residential buffer on the original concept plan did not meet the requirements. The loading bay that you see here was too close to the adjacent residential properties. It has to be more than three hundred feet. Again, like I said, there wasn't cross-access that was provided. And all of the parking was provided between the front of the building and the street. And our site and design standards say that no more than fifty percent of the parking can be between the building and the street, so you're not looking at a sea of parking and cars. And also, there were some questions about whether the building met modulation requirements, meaning you have to, you have to vary the, the wall planes. If you look at this site plan, you'll see it's very square. In response to the staff report, pretty much on the day of the planning commission meeting, the applicant provided us an updated concept plan. That's the concept plan that you see here on the right-hand side of the page. All of those issues, except for one, have been resolved. So, the, the residential buffer has been widened, the loading bay has been moved to be further than three hundred feet. There was cross-access that has been provided down to the south, although it's still not shown to the north. All of the parking has been broken up, so it is not in front of the building. And since then, you can see how the building now modulates. With that, when we went to the planning commission, we said that we were okay now with the concept plan as it was being proposed. The only issue that we had, first of all, is that it still did not show access to the north. And the second was that staff was still noting that primary access was coming off of South Locust Grove. And per our requirements, it's supposed to be closed. I know that that was one of the, the issues that the applicant had, was they didn't wanna close its access. Staff's comment to the applicant and to the planning commission was, if the planning commission wanted to deliberate on this and say they supported keeping the South Locust Grove access, staff would not oppose this. The council has the ability to waive the requirement. So, if the council wants to waive the requirement and allow this South Locust Grove access against, again, the staff did not strongly oppose this. This was merely an issue of regulations. A, ACHD did review this and ACHD did not have any concerns with this. Our big concern was trucks and whether or not there would be big trucks coming in and out of there. I know that, that the one person that submitted public testimony over here did have some comments about trucks. I'm not sure if they're here this evening. The last thing I wanted to talk about was in the original staff report, the first version of the elevations, almost all of it was metal siding. There was, there was no accents. There were facade sections that were longer than fifty feet without modulation. There was riff lines. It didn't have brakes. And it was possible it wasn't meeting the fenestration requirements. So, what you see here on the top was the original version that went to the planning commission. Again, on the day of the planning commission, applicants submitted elevations that were significantly better than the original ones. In, in general, when, when we're talking about elevations in building design, this is something that's usually worked out with staff and the applicant outside of the hearing. It's something we do at the certificate of zoning compliance and we make sure that it meets the ASM requirements. But we were calling out the original elevations because we didn't want them to get approved in the hearing as they were, when they were so far from, from being to the ASM. What we see on the bottom now, what you're looking at, we believe they've made a huge amount of progress. We think that, that probably with, with a little bit of back and forth, we could get it there. Staff has received two letters. One letter expressed numerous concerns. It was by a property owner that lived in the subdivision to the east, right about the center of that subdivision. That was in regard to traffic, lighting, safety, loss of property values. The other letter that I received was from the property owner that is to the south. They, their concerns were they wanted to make sure that access was provided because they have an access easement here. The, they only saw this version of the concept plan. The most recent version of the concept plan does provide that access. So, I don't know if the adjacent property owner now had seen that. I would assume that they would be in favor of that because that's what they were asking for. With that, staff recommended approval with the conditions listed in the staff report, with the addition that the site plan, now we support the site plan. The, the only change we would recommend is that the council debate whether they wanna have access off of South Locust Grove. And we would still need to see a northern access connecting to the northern properties, even if they're not going to be developing, developing those northern properties for some time. They would need to provide an access easement. At, at the planning commission, October seventh, the planning commission moved to recommend approval. They also liked the most recent version of the concept plan, the one that I showed you tonight, dated October seventh. They supported keeping the South Locust Grove access open. With that, I've concluded my presentation. Certainly happy to offer any clarification or answer any questions, council.
Thank you, Alan. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you so much, Alan. It is a complicated one. So, I'm sure I'll, I'll get us going down a rabbit hole just to start out. My biggest concern, I wanna kind of put the annexation and expansion of this business to the side for a second. Hate changes to the comprehensive plan and the flume. I know we're limiting that now, I think to twice a year, once a year. If we had some that were grandfathered in, maybe this fits in that category. My question is, describe the ownership of all of the parcels that are affected by the changes to the flume. Cause I'm concerned that there isn't common ownership of all of the, maybe I'm just not following it in the application, but I'd hate for us to be making changes to the flume affecting properties that may not be aware of the changes. And that's my main concern.
Very reasonable question, thank you. Okay, so that, if you can see the bottom right, the two properties that you see in gray here, those are the ones that are being proposed by the applicant. The two properties you see here that are being recommended for change to commercial were also co-applicants on this application. So, even though they're not part of this development, they actually did sign the application and did, did submit affidavits of, of legal interest. So, so they are on board and are okay, okay with it.
Councilman Schrader.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. That clears it up. It wasn't clear to me, just trying to follow all the addresses, like which ones were on board. Okay.
Very little of this are clear, this, this is very difficult.
Oh, fair enough. And so then, I guess my next question would be, what, how did this flume amendment come to be? Or is this, like, this is from our old process and this application's been ongoing since earlier in the year? Or help me understand how we ended up with a flume amendment?
Yeah, there is, there is a regulation now that says you can only amend the flume. And I'm off the top of my head, you know it more than I do. This was grandfathered in, so this application came in before that requirement. So, they, they got in right before we, you passed it.
And sorry, one more.
Councilman Schrader.
And so, do we have any kind of different outreach than normal, than our normal notifications to property owners? Considering we're doing a flume, considering a flume amendment outside of what will now be the go-forward cadence for city council?
Actually, there isn't a posting that is required for a future land use map amendment. So, there was actually more notification that happened with this. If we were just changing the future land use map, we wouldn't have had to post this. But because this was actually a specific piece of property, all the property owners within five hundred feet were notified. There was a sign posting that went up. So, anybody that was around this area would have been notified that, that this is one of the things that was being proposed.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. Thank you for that presentation, although complicated, very clear. My, my, my question is regard to the property to the north. You mentioned in your presentation that there would, leaving those properties as mixed-use community might be an issue. Can you please let us know what your concerns are with leaving the properties to the north, mixed-use commercial?
I guess our only, it was more, we weren't, I guess our concerns were we weren't really sure how this was going to interact. What we would be left with was be just these property here as mixed-use commercial. We already know that this one here, or sorry, that this one here is zoned to allow apartments. So it basically comes down to these little two properties here being designated for mixed-use community. I think more than likely what you'll see in the future will be some sort of proposal to designate that to something else. But we're not sure now how all this would integrate and function if it really was proposed. Someone wanted to do some kind of mixed-use community proposal. It doesn't have great access. It's not big enough. We're not sure if, if the way that it's already built out and what's already being there is, is copacetic with a mixed-use community type project. But there are some questions. We're not sure how this would play out in the future. I, I don't have a solid answer for you. I just wanted, it was, it was discussed and thought we'd mention that we're just not sure what that would mean in the future of these ones to the north were still mixed-use community. It was, it was a, is a reservation more than a statement. But that said, we do, we do support, we do support the proposal.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burton.
One last follow-up. Were the property owners to the north notified? Do they know of this, of this proposed change of use?
Yes, sir, they do. The property owner directly to the north, they'll give her her name, I can't remember. She came into the planning commission hearing, was very supportive of this project. Her only concern, which is why I brought this up to you, is she didn't understand exactly the way the process worked. And she thought that we were making them put an access into her property. And all we were doing is, is saying that they had to provide an easement so that when those, if and when those properties develop in the future, whether it's ten years or twenty years, that now there's access. So she didn't understand that. But she did come into the hearing and I'm sure they can, they can expand on. I talked about them being very good neighbors and that they had worked with her very well.
Mr. Mayor, that's all.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ellen, you mentioned that the changes in the original staff report that were made, and then the applicant followed up the day of the original planning and zoning commission meeting. So the public didn't, the testified, didn't have the opportunity to review those changes made by the applicant. And the commission did not have an opportunity to fully review those changes made by the applicant. Is that right?
Miss councilperson, members of the council, actually, the planning commission did get to review it. We, we had time to tell them basically exactly what I just did to you to tell them what the changes were. The, the, the changes that they implemented made it a better project, but didn't significantly change it. So it took the parking off the street. It did more modulation to the building. It, there was still some question about where the Locust Grove access would occur. It pushed the outdoor activity area into being in conformance with the code. Originally, it was too close to the residential. So none of the changes that were being recommended staff would have really made a significant difference. In fact, it would have made it a better project. The only difference was that we were asking the applicant to provide northern and southern access. And again, the property owner to the north already knew about that access. Property to the owner to the south actually commented on the original plan and complained that there wasn't any access. So there really aren't any changes that would affect anybody adversely, only positively.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up?
Councilwoman Pearl.
In my opinion, and I'll make this short because the applicant still needs to share, the, a number of conditions in the original staff report were so significant that if those were fulfilled, we might not even be looking at the same concept. And so I, I just have a lot of concern about that. So hopefully, when we hear from the applicant, we can kind of address that. And if you have anything to share about that statement I just made, I would appreciate it.
Again, really, the, the significant changes were they modulated the building, they moved the parking off of the front, they moved the drive, they moved the outdoor loading aisle, and they provided access to the north and the south. Those, those were the issues that we had. All of those have been resolved, except that they still haven't shown a northern access. And council should discuss whether they support the Locust Grove access.
Council, any additional questions for staff? All right, now staff, can the police come forward?
For the record, Kent Brown, thirty-one sixty-one East Springwood, Meridian, Idaho. While we were discussing the, the recent changes that were made at the planning and zoning hearing, and the staff report didn't come out really early. And when we, as soon as we knew about those changes, we made those as quickly as possible. And it was very easy to do for the most part. The, we had our loading dock closest to the northwest corner of our building, and we moved it to the southwest corner of our building. So that was the biggest part of the change. If you look on the, the screen, the Belleville subdivision, that property's to the south of us. Alan has made reference that there's a daycare there. Brent Belleville and I did that subdivision just recently. There's a flex building that's supposed to go adjacent and parallel to Locust Grove. And then there's parking behind. And then when the tenant of the daycare leaves, there'll be a duplicate building in the back, and there'll, there'll be parking in the middle. If you go to the next one. One more. Here's the Belleville subdivision. So we have known where that access is. This is their access off of Locust Grove. So that doesn't get interfered with. And we've always known that that access was in the middle of their property and that we could accommodate that, that location. If you go back to the first one again, the property owner to the north of us, those two properties are enclaves, they haven't been annexed. When we first started designing this project, we approached the highway district because access to Locust Grove is critical. And asked them where we wanted or where they wanted it. There's numerous locations. We could have put it to the north, the very northeast corner, and that could have been our shared access with that property to the north. The highway district said that they would prefer it to align with the Ella Brook subdivision. That's where they wanted the entrance to be. So we, and that was where they, they asked for it to be. I, I know Alan works on a number of projects. But the discussion about our access to Locust Grove, the planning and zoning commission doesn't have the right to grant that access. That's something that the council has to do. And so we discussed our operation of our building. And that's why they agreed that they could support what we were doing. The Intermountain Woods people, there are two main buildings over here off of Atkins. In between the two buildings is where customers come. Their customers are hardwood flooring people and cabinet makers. They supply hardwoods and so forth for those, those types of, of uses. The new warehouse will not be having any customers. Customers are taking products, they're taking them off of Atkins. The only thing that will be coming in off of Locust Grove will be the few employees. There's, there's approximately twelve that would work there, some office people and some warehouse people. And then the reason that it's critical is how the entrances to the freeway are and how they can have trucks stack up off-site and then schedule those trucks to come at a specific time. They only operate between eight and five. So it's not after hours or extended hours. That's, this building isn't a part of the day-to-day operation. It's just a warehouse to store their, their hardwood products. This strip between the two properties, there's an elevation difference in that area. Those, those properties are going to be three feet higher. They're currently three feet higher than the property that is being annexed. And so there's not going to be a lot of cross-access. The planning and zoning commission asked us to, to provide a cross-access point. The use of this property, when we approached in our meeting with pre-application, staff brought up is that you have basically a twenty-year business that's been operating in Meridian and has been successful. And they're trying to expand and make that work for them. To me, that's a success story for you in having this type of use for the different cabinet makers and your flooring people that have access to these wood products there. It's not generally where the general public come, but it is more of a contractor thing and that all of that access that the general public and unloading and loading for them is at, off of Atkins. The unloading on this building, if you go forward, Alan.
Forward, up or forward, down?
Down. Down again. Past Belleville, next one.
Down?
One more. So in this northwest corner is the one spot that we would have a ramp go in between the two properties so that they could connect because otherwise they're going to be at different elevations. But that's the only place that, between those two properties, that people would be able to connect. The parking stalls that are on the existing, they're going to remain. There's not going to be no change to that parking. But the office is over here on the other side. I think I got one more, Alan.
Councilwoman Burton.
You say ramp. Bet, you mean like actual?
It's gonna have
Section width for a vehicle to?
It's gonna have to be some kind of ramp because you're going to have three foot higher in elevation that you're going to be going up to. So between the two properties, yeah, there will be.
Designed for cars and trucks to
Well,
safely utilize
Work lists and so forth, yeah, that they can do, go through there.
Yeah. Thanks.
What he showed and what he's showing is a lot smaller than
Right.
It would be, the architect is here and can speak to that.
I just figured, just clarifying that. Thanks.
We intend on providing an access to the north. We just need to work it out with that nice lady, our landowner. We share that currently those, those existing properties not being annexed, there's a little strip. We currently have an access easement on that with her. And that's where the previous owner always went. If you go to the second picture in this series, Alan.
Down?
Yeah, up. Sorry about that.
Yeah?
Right there, and you blow that, that middle one up. So in a line with the church's parking lot is her driveway. And the house that used to sit on that northerly piece shared that same driveway. And we have an access easement across that on her property. And so we, we have the ability to put it. We just need to know where it's most viable for that, that adjoining property. And understanding that is that you have limited access points that you're going to have on Locust Grove. If you go from Water Tower, you go, that first property that's on Water Tower on the corner takes off access off of Water Tower. Then the next one is the Belleville property, and their access is on their southerly boundary. Then this one is why the highway district was okay with that is that we're basically halfway in between Water Tower and Franklin Road. And so they, they looked at that being a good place to have a connection and then have these cross-access easements continue from the properties going, going to the north. So.
On that point, Kent, would you be, I thought the condition would be that you'd be providing the cross-access to the north. But wouldn't you also vacate the access easement that's on that?
We
Property? Because you wouldn't need it. We wouldn't
We, we're not going to need it. And at some point, we're going to have to, what we currently have is we have a joint agreement that we maintain it together. So they, they pay part of the taxes. They, I mean, it's not in their ownership name, but it is on the deed as a part of their property. And so they have an agreement. And yeah, eventually, when and if that property develops, yeah, we, we would release that and, and make that go away. But, and because we don't have ownership of it, we didn't try to include that. I mean, she says that she's ready to be gone, but I think she's got her, her kids living with her and, and so. Are there any questions that I can answer about this? As Treg knows, I'm, I drive by here probably ten times a day, so I'm very familiar with it.
So, so Kent, I'm going to play off of that just to, not the driving by, following up a little bit on Joe's comment, a little bit on what Councilman Burton mentioned before. Give me your years of experience and expertise and tell me what this section of, of property looks like redeveloping from Franklin up to the back of this tennis property with accesses, with land use designations as you see them. But can, can that retention pond be modified in the future in your opinion? That's my bigger, bigger concern is, once you get this, this northern cross-access, what does the rest of this look like in the future?
So there's going to have to be one more entrance into the property. And it's going to have to be, to even make that existing multifamily that's there on the corner. Bryce Peterson submitted that when I was on the planning and zoning commission years ago and got that property approved or an apartment complex, and they were three-story buildings. And then the highway district started doing improvements there and on Franklin. And they also have a floodway that's there. So the big part of the property has a pond that you can see the road going around. And the other part is floodway. So they couldn't put any improvements into that floodway. And so they've got this strip of ground that is to the west side of them. And then they have a strip equally sized and by themselves, they can't develop. In the last year, all of these property owners in this entire length have been contacted by multifamily people trying to put multifamily in there. Whether that happens, that's a possibility, but they would have to, they would have to have all three properties most likely to make that happen. You could do some commercial, but you're going to have commercial that is going to be further away from that intersection. And what do you do with the existing residential that's already zoned there? Would be nice if that could be a part of that project and make that work. But it, it is a difficult piece because of access. And anytime that you get close to a major intersection like that, you got to be far enough away. The church has a park driveway on the north side of the building. That's probably as close as they could go to that intersection with an access, which just basically goes across to the property that already has multifamily on. It could go to the center of the church, but that, the highway district would probably have to speak about the distance there to go. Could it go from a commercial use? I mean, your mixed-use community wants people to, to drive and it's the depth of those properties. Could it go from a commercial use? I mean, your mixed use community wants people to to drive and it's the depth of those properties that make having that type of use. Is it more reasonable that the industrial expands? I mean, until Brian in our in our pre app meeting, I was expecting to tell these clients well, you tore down some houses and you tore down some trees and you might not be able to get industrial there. And I know that that's the decision that you guys are wrestling with. But when you have limited industrial and you have a user that is proven up and realistically, you can't look at them as out of state people. They've been here supplying the local people and they're a part of the community and they're they're being successful. Could they expand to the north? Yeah, that would that would work. That was one of the discussion items that they had, but that owner isn't ready to sell and I the property to just to the north of them, they just sold. And they kind of like being a farm. They they've got six grow boxes out there and they view themselves as farmers. So. I I don't know. I so that's that's my experience. I can see it going and more going industrial. And I can see mixed use continuing if you include all of them. And and I know that the developers have tried to do it because you get that property on the corner that already has existing residential. You really can't make that property work without having the properties to the north.
Thank you. I mean, we have no idea what will happen, but at least give counsel and an idea as you think about access and what would be moving forward in what areas and the importance of that north, south, etc. So thank you. Council, Councilman Pearl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the size of this warehouse, it's about the size of an Albertson's. It's huge. So I want to understand more about what is going to normally I wouldn't, I wouldn't likely ask this question, except that it's just so big. More about what's going to happen inside of the warehouse so that I understand more about how the I'm still don't have a full grasp of the traffic flow. You addressed the number of staff that would be coming in. My assumption is is if they're doing more manufacturing than they are storing.
Their storage.
You had mentioned, are they building cabinets there or are they storing items there?
Storage.
So do they have delivery trucks that are coming in and out during the day? And is it?
The delivery trucks are dropping supplies off. And and then leaving them as a warehouse. They're not manufacturing anything here. It is a hub that other of their properties would come and pick up prop stuff. But that's why we located it in between the two buildings so that it's not seen by the public. And the number of trucks isn't that many trucks because they they don't have the, they don't want that that congestion in their their operation. They have a, even what they currently have, they have an overhead covered because of this, the the nature of their wood, they don't want it to get damaged. So they have a covered area that they're unloading and loading stuff. So realistically, the activity portion of this is sandwiched. It's the Oreo filling in between the two buildings, if you will. And so they're not seeing that as they're looking at at these properties. What they're going to see is a warehouse with some few cars for the people that are working in that warehouse. And then they'll see. You know, I I don't know how often one of the people from the plants here and he can talk about how often they, but there's everything scheduled so that it they're very organized in the fact of them showing up and leaving that there's not this congestion. They don't want people stacked up on site. And they want to be able to have access to the freeway. And this provides that they can either get off at Meridian or they can get off at Eagle in between the two. And that's why this entrance onto Locust Grove is so critical. Because you can go over and get to the Overland Road and access those also.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne. So I I I agree with you in regard to there. There's probably, you know, the customers are going to be down there. They're going to be on the other side. I'm there all the time. And so I get it. But I I think there's going to be a fair amount of trucks. I mean, like Councilwoman Perro mentioned. That's a that's that's a big warehouse and and there's going to be a lot of product going in and out of that place. And so
I I
I I know you wouldn't know that. And they can speak to it. That's fine. That's fine. So but my my question to you is, is there a way to take those trucks off of Atkins and bring them down instead of having big trucks go down Locust Grove? Is that a possibility?
Obviously, it is. I mean, they they currently are going in there.
Right. Don't mean interrupt, Kent, but like I get how they're going in. And they for sure receive trucks on the Atkins side. My question is, can they can those trucks continue to go to Atkins? But is there a wait from for the 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 big trucks to go through Atkins and and deliver and unload and load at this new warehouse that you're proposing? From Atkins, not Locust Grove?
I can have them speak to
Sure. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schrader.
A question. We did receive some public testimony from somebody that lives nearby. And I think you did address some of the questions about traffic, but maybe we'll get into that some more. There was a concern about the lighting. I just wanted to give you an opportunity to address that. Is there? I know our planning staff oft, okay, well, let's go there if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Alan, so waiting for the go ahead, sir. Yeah, some of the the property owner that you're talking about, they're in the subdivision here. Some of the things they had concerns about are just performance standards. If they put in lighting, the lighting has to be downcast and shielded. It's cut off to a certain amount of foot candles. That's all stuff that's done administratively. You can't have big bright lights shining at a house. The we have requirements. And when we look at the CCC, we'll make sure that their lighting is downcast and shielded. Again, if it meets, if it's over eighteen hundred lumens, then they have to do a photometric plan and all that. So lighting is not going to be an issue.
Perfect. Thanks.
You like to say your name and address for the record?
Kalen Partridge. With Intermountain Wood Products.
Thank you.
Yeah. I to answer a couple of your questions, I guess. So trucks, I think, are estimated between four and eight a day. It would come in. Typically, we'd schedule them throughout the day, so they would come like one or two at a time. We would unload them in the back. And then they would come out the other side and leave. I don't believe it's realistic for them to come in on Atkins primarily because of the elevation change. It would be, it would restrict which direction the trucks can go. And that would force all the trucks to they would go through Atkins and they would get on to this new property on the north side, which is exactly what we're trying to avoid with the loading dock moved to the south side.
Council, any additional questions? The applicant? Councilman Pearl?
Sorry, we're getting so specific, but you know, we do have members of the community that that would be asking the same question. When you say trucks, are you meaning semi trucks?
Yes, semi trucks.
I don't see a lot of semis on this section of Locust Grove generally. So that's just, I wanted to understand that. This isn't all that far from some schools and there are pedestrians in this area quite often. So just wanted to
I don't know if I may, I don't know for sure, but I would guess at least half of the trucks that currently come into Atkins go on Locust Grove because they come off of Eagle and the easiest access to our property is to come south and then go on Locust Grove. So I think a good portion of the trucks are already driving through that area.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, can we have anyone from the public sign up to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to provide testimony on this item, if you'd like to come forward at this time or if there, do we have anybody online with this? We did not have anybody online. So if you'd like to come forward and say your name and address for the record and you can be recognized for three minutes. If you can stick into the mic.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Danny Zoo. I'm leaving, I'm a property owner across street. Right there in the Ella Brooks subdivision, right across the Locust Grove. I'm the proposed development. So I I didn't get a chance to submit a, you know, statement before the meeting, so I just came from work. Yeah, so basically the question has been asked. I just want to repeat and emphasize as a property owner living nearby with three kids, small children, and I have significant concerns about the traffic. And of course, it's safety related. And so looks like, you know, the information that we just discussed that there will be pretty significant increase of traffic by semi trucks. And my personal experience, I I live there for almost six years now at the beginning of the subdivision. Across straight from there, I don't see a lot of semi trucks going back and forth, at least during within that section of Locust Grove. So that is a pretty significant concerns on my part. And including my neighbors, I talked to a few of them. So I just want to make sure that the city council aware of those concerns. Thank you.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holman.
Was it Daniel?
Yes.
And yeah. I I appreciate that that comment and the testimony. And so I guess for us, for me, it's weighing the factor, okay, four to eight semi trucks, which would be on Locust Grove. And and yeah, we don't, you know, people don't want semi trucks. But if we leave it mixed use and it goes to residential and it goes to multifamily and all of a sudden you have two hundred and fifty units and cars. And from what I understand in reading the minutes for the semis, we're looking at limited office hours or or warehouse hours, you know, eight to five type of timeframe. So I'm weighing that versus a residential multifamily where you have cars at all hours. And let's say it is a two hundred and fifty unit facility or even retail, which you may be operating from seven to eleven at night. And so that's that's what we're trying to weigh. So if I hear objection to forty eight semis, I'm thinking, well, what would the, is there objection to having retail and in a mixed use community with apartment complexes and that sort of thing, which also has impact. So what what what's your flavor? Pick pick your poison, I guess.
Right, that that's a really good question. I think personally, I think my personal preference will be, you know, lean, I I would lean towards the other side, which is the mixed use, including commercial instead of industrial semi trucks traffic. That's just my take. I I believe a lot of people share that. So yes, so you know, it it the other concern is that the proposed entrance after the new new property, new warehouse is, as we see in the picture, is essentially right across straight from the only entrance of my subdivision. So I mean, that's the only entrance and exit for that subdivision or the cars, you know, go going in and out of that. And when we, you know, imagine that we actually try to drive out of the subdivision and then there's semi truck coming out from the other side. That's, yeah, that's a lot of customer.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
It's Robyn.
And and Daniel, I appreciate that input. And and that's again, why I'm I'm weighing this thing is, okay, if their hours are eight to five and they're forty is is because it's a warehouse. It's not a long expanded time. And when you leave at rush hour, let's say if you leave at seven fifteen or seven thirty, there shouldn't be any traffic. And when you say, and and you have commercial or multifamily across there, you you've got up many cars going at the same time. That's why I'm trying to weigh this and thinking well, there's a lot of advantages for going this route than the other route in terms of impacts to traffic and and impacts to your neighborhood of coming in and out. So that's, that's, that's my thinking on this. So
Yeah, there there's the the reality is that there's already a lot of traffic on Locust Grove. You know, it's not like Eagle Road, but it's it's, you know, because Eagle Road, I'd be a lot of people try to avoid it. So they actually take Locust Grove. So every day, I mean, if I get home early, like even before five, you know, sometime during the noon, the lunch hours or starting, you know, after three thirty, when the school is out, already have a lot of traffic, not semi trucks, but just ordinary traffic during that section of Locust Grove. So imagine you just mentioned that the office hour is like eight to five. So definitely that overlaps the kind of rush hour. And then, you know, we're, there's actually a long line of normal traffic because of the traffic lights, the the weight. And and then, you know, that's even, you know, that started way before five o'clock. And now you have semi trucks waiting to get out. That's, you know, we're going to spackle out of traffic jam there.
Appreciate your input. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Is there anybody else like provide testimony on this item at this time in the public? Then with the applicant, like to come forward, final comments?
For the record, Kent Brown, thirty one sixty one East. When you look at the area and you take the area directly north on the north side of Franklin, that that's an industrial area. And there's semi trucks. So and as I drive through there all the time, I I pick Locust Grove and I, yeah, there's times when I don't pick it. I don't pick it between four thirty and six, because that's when that intersection is really backed up. When I first started going down there, Locust, Locust Grove was a dead end road that just went past Treg's house and basically just stopped. It was a really nice road because an ACHD employee lived up there. And that road always got chip sealed and was well taken care of. But the city, like you're currently doing with Linder Road, got that overpass in and worked with Jay Build, which was another one of my clients that did that in that area. This really works in this location. If you limit the access and say you can't come off of Locust Grove, they're going to be driving right past the same areas to get into Atkins. Because you have to go, you can either enter it from Water Tower or you're going to enter it from Franklin. Either one, they've got to go in there. Most likely, they're going to drive up to Water Tower because turning there on Franklin Road closer to that intersection, Franklin is is busy all the time too. So I I know that that is a challenge. We we hear about traffic all the time. Councilman Hogland really hit it really well is I think it would be different if this was a different type of a warehouse that these guys have limited number of trucks that are coming. That's one of the things that I liked. And when when they approached me, I kind of wondered about it because I I haven't had the best of luck doing things close to my home and having neighbors not like me. And I like this project. I think that they're a good use here and and I don't view them being the traffic issue that people are concerned about. And that's my final comments.
Thank you. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
Kent, you're one of the best. You know that. I just, my other concern was I just, I want it to be a good, good looking building.
And so do I.
You know, I don't want it to be a warehouse. You guys listening? Like, I don't, I don't want it to be like what your warehouses look on the other side. The reason why you get away with it is because it's industrial, it fits the mark. Don't make this look like your other facilities. And I'm not saying that they looked bad because they look great, but matches everything else that's over there, right? This has, you're you're right next to residential, you're right next to a thoroughfare that's going to be busy. Dress it up. Just do me a favor and dress it up. Don't make it look like a normal warehouse. I think I think that, other than that, I think that we're in good shape. Just do me a favor and dress it up. Don't make it look like a normal warehouse. I think, I think that, uh, other than that, I think that we're in good shape. You good? Okay.
Mr. Mary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council of Kent, I guess I'm curious. I don't like to say Intermountain Wood Products going anywhere. But would they be okay with the DA modification that we're talking about, including some of those limitations that fit their business, the hours of operation?
Definitely.
Those types of things. So that way, in case it were to change, that we wouldn't be faced with a different.
So, so I appreciate you bringing that up, Bill, because when I, I read that first existing DA that's on their existing facility, the neighbors, in fact, the, the sweet lady that lives to the north of us, she said, you know, they showed up en masse to stop that industrial development from going in against their, their acre part parcels that they have there, two acre, three acre parcels. And the developer Barnes proposed putting in the, the buffer. Well, the buffer wasn't necessarily a common area lot. It was just the screening. And as I read the conditions, it said, you're to screen residential uses that are adjacent. When this becomes industrial, we don't, we don't need it. But I offered to the planning staff going, we want a DA that covers all of our properties. And so we, we want to include that. And definitely that's why I think it's a very appropriate and your legal counsel has given you good direction that you can cover some of those concerns that you're having. By the time we put in all those extra trees that we had to mitigate that they cut down. It's interesting, sitting here before the meeting, they said that the forester had been out and talked to the neighbor and said, most of those trees were infested and were ready to be cut out anyway. They maybe could have not had to do as many as they're going to do now, but that's going to enhance the site and it's going to make look nicer sooner. Anything else?
That's my whole one.
Mr. Mayor and Kent, yeah, to Mr. Mary's comment about hours of operation or whatnot, what is, what is reasonable for, for that? I mean, it's not something you want to go into lightly and, and limits on there to.
But that's inside the warehouse, not deliveries.
For the record, that was stated eight to five, just what they currently do. That's on the record. If you, if you're, if you'd like to come forward and add, so we can have it on the record, please.
And Kalen Partridge. At times we do have trucks coming in at seven to be unloaded. And our, our own delivery trucks going out would perhaps start at seven. Our and
I, I guess I'm asking the question because you, because the DA is going to be over both pieces. What you want to do is maybe limit the entrance off of Locust Grove
Yeah.
to the eight to five, but have the other entrance be soon, if you can live with that.
Yeah, that would help us be flexible because our own delivery trucks would leave earlier, perhaps at seven to get on the road and those could leave out Atkins side.
So Mr. Mayor.
That's my whole one.
Heard seven to five PM for the warehouse off of Locust Grove access point.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Ask this question for the applicant. For the public hearing is closed, just in case. I want to understand more thoroughly from staff about the, the north and south cross access easements and what you need to see from the applicant to include that in the DA. Do, do you need an updated concept plan from them? Do you need something done legally? Do we need to have that short plat done before we do that? And perhaps this is a question for Mr. Mary as well. I want to understand the process because I have some concerns about approving a D modification without an accurate concept plan if we're tying one to it.
Sure. I think those are reasonable. Bill Mary, that might be one for you. I mean, if we can, we're, we're okay with the concept plan that you see here, except that it doesn't show a northern access. I'm not sure how specific the applicant wants to get about putting in the northern access. But that may be, it may be a Bill Mary question.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So what we've done on many, many occasions, because and the access is really going to be dependent on what the user is going to be. So there will likely be some limitations on where you could logically put it. But we would normally require in the DA that the basically the applicant agreed to a future an easement for a future access point along their northern boundary. And basically what happens is when that other party wants to develop, then they work together to say it, it needs to be here or can it be there and wherever there's going to go. And so it basically is recorded against in the DA that they will provide it. They will then determine later where the exact location is going to be.
If I could add north and south.
Yeah, we could do, we could do that. But we, we do that all the time. It's not a concern.
Most likely we'd like to be closer to Locust Grove, but you have to have it outside the landscape buffer. And the reason being is you don't like people wandering through your site going to some other property. And so generally they're, they're fairly, going to be fairly close to Locust Grove, but outside the landscape buffer, out of parking stalls.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much. Council, any discussion before closing the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
It tells me this is one of those, we may want to leave it open just in case scenarios as we discuss.
Yeah. Well, as you contemplate that, I'm I think it's great to see an existing business have an opportunity to expand and grow in our community. We're seeing this from a lot of businesses. And as with it limited industrial, I know the challenges of wanting to stay consistent. Going to industrial is a great thing in this location. And, you know, if, but for the already existing multifamily to the north with that pond, there, there could be a good argument to make this all area all industrial, but that will, what the market will determine what's available in this area. But I think in this property with these changes, I think it makes good sense for the change.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my whole one.
For Alan. Alan, what, what site plan are we approving for sure? Cause I noted in staff recommendation that the site plan that was presented on October seventh hearing be the one that is approved? Is that still?
Correct. Yeah. It's the, it's the one that was included in today's staff report that was dated October seventh. Same site plan that was provided to the planning commission. Really the only changes that you're going to see to anything else would be a northern and southern access. Other than that, we were fine with it. And for some discussion about the Locust Grove access.
Right.
The, the, since the staff report went out and the planning commission, they made huge improvements that, that we no longer have concerns with the elevations or the site plan.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
I move that we close the public here.
Second, the motion.
Motion second, close the public here. Any discussion? If not, on favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? You guys have it. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember. You know, I, I echo your comments from earlier. It's always wonderful to see existing Meridian businesses expand and grow and, and to be successful. So this is, uh, this is a true testament of that. Intermountain hardwood have been a staple in our community for decades. So grateful for their success and their willingness to take a continued investment in, in Meridian. I just hope that they dress it up, make a little. All right. That said, I make a motion to approve item H dash two zero two one dash zero zero four two with the following modifications, making sure that there is a northern access. Not going to get too specific on where that is, but to make sure that there is one going forward. Is there any other? Okay. And I thought that was very stated and the southern boundary as well. Anything else need to be stated? Is that good?
Um, limitation on hours.
Okay. And making limited access to hours on the Locust Grove access point from the hours of seven AM to five PM Monday through, throughout the week.
Mr. Mayor, and let's let him finish. Before you go to adjusting.
Was that access or hours of operation?
Hours of operation between seven AM to five PM at the Locust Grove access.
Is there a second? I will second, Mr. Mayor. And for
Motion is second is our discussion.
Yes. Did we want to add in? I think we have to, council needs to act on waiver to allow access off, off of Locust Grove as one of the items that we need to include. And, and then I, I think we need to just make sure it's agreed to that the site plan is, as presented on October seventh, just to cover all our bases. So.
Motion maker agree with those changes to the second.
Second certainly does.
Supported. At that sound point. Excellent. Is there any further questions on, we have everything from everything's point? Okay. Is there any discussion? If not, Kirk Calderon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Avaner.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Raider.
Aye.
Oglan.
Aye.
Burn.
All eyes, motion carries and the item is agreed to.
And Mr. Mayor, I forgot to.
Councilman Holden.
Do this during the discussion portion, but just Daniel appreciated your testimony. And for us up here, having, we do a lot of these around the city. We really did try to pick the lesser of, of the traffic impacts. And I know we're talking about semi trucks, which, you know, causes consternation, but seeing what we see with multifamily and commercial and the impact that has on the roads, I hope you trust us that we really did want to do what was the least worst for your neighborhood. So hopefully, hopefully your neighbors will understand. So, but I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said, Mr. Holden. With that, we moved to item seven under ordinances. Item number seven is ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen fifty three. Yes, the clerk reads this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Ms. Marretts. An ordinance related H twenty twenty one zero zero three six Briar Ridge subdivision rezone, the rezone of a parcel of land located in the one southeast one quarter of the northeast one quarter of northeast one quarter of southeast one quarter of section thirty six township three north range one west Boise Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, established from determining the land use zoning classification of forty point nine nine two acres of land from the R four medium low density residential zoning district to TNR traditional neighborhood residential zoning district in the Meridian city code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody that like it read in its entirety? See no one? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pearl.
I move that we approve ordinance number two, one, one, nine, five, three for Briar Ridge subdivision with the suspension of rules.
Second, the motion.
I have a motion second to approve the item under suspension of rules. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? You guys have it. And the item is agreed to. Council, anything under future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Uh, just a housekeeping item. At some point in the future, if we could revisit the fees that we charge for, forgetting the name, but basically with someone's pet.
Impound.
Impounding fee for pets that are found. That sounded like something we might want to talk about.
Read. If not, do I have a motion? Councilmember. Motion adjourned. All in favor, sing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name?